This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press and posted on the municipal bulletin board. All notices are on file with the Planning Board Secretary. Fire exits are located on the east and west sides of the council chambers, as well as the rear of the building. I would ask anyone with a cellphone or other device to kindly put it in silent mode for the duration of the meeting. Just as a reminder that this meeting is being recorded by AP-TV, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today is Wednesday, May 29, 2019, Special Meeting of the Planning Board. Councilwoman Avon Clayton.
Here.
Mayor John Moore.
Here.
Jim Henry.
Michael Manzella.
Here.
Trudy Seifert.
Here.
Jennifer Soudar.
Here.
Alexis Taylor.
Rick Lambert.
Barbara Kuzak.
Here.
For the record, Mr. Andrews.
Just to get started, I've been asked by some members of the audience to kind of give you just like a little bit of an overview of like, because many of you probably have never been to a planning board meeting, and some of you obviously have, just a few seconds of just the protocol of how this is, how this goes down. What happens is that the applicant will do various presentations by their professionals. So, once their professionals are finished with their presentation, I will be asking if the public has any questions. So, the public is allowed to ask questions that are relevant to what that professional presented. And that goes on a couple of times depending on how many professionals we have. It could be landscaping, it could be lighting, it could be engineering, it could be planning. There are a lot, a number of presentations. So, once those presentations are over and all the questions have been asked, you're welcome to ask anything, once again, having to do with what that person presented. Then, and the board is allowed to ask that, and our professionals are allowed to ask the same, you know, those questions. We do take a look and kind of say, are the questions already on record? So that if there are multiple questions or the same, we'll kind of mention that, because we would like to have everyone be able to speak that would like to speak, and make sure that there are new questions coming up, or new issues, or new concerns. After that is done, then what happens is that we go into, you'll have an opportunity to comment on the project as a whole. Okay? With that, there'll be a three-minute limitation, one time to the microphone, and you have three minutes to speak. And at that point also, that if there's a lot of redundancy, we will state that it's already on record, and we will ask if there's anything new that you'd like to say to add to the record. Because all of this is being, there'll be transcripts, there's, like I said, there's transcripts of everything that's going on, and everything is on record, so that everyone knows what's happened. So, that's kind of like, and then after that, after all the comments are done, and all the board asks the comment, has any comments that they would like to do, decide whether they're going to be taking a vote, or what happens at that point. And whether we, if we run out of time, or whatever, we'll make some decisions when that... So, that kind of gives you like a broad stroke overview of participation times for you guys to be able to speak and voice your opinions. Is there anything, is there anything else, Jack?
Yes, yes. Attorneys, how many attorneys are here that should be sent? Advocate? Sorry. You mean attorney? Or two?
No offense.
For the record, Alexis Taylor has arrived. Please note. Okay. If there are no attorneys present?
There's indicated that another attorney's on the way.
Brother? Okay. Well, the only difference will be that when the attorney is present, after the attorney for the applicant presents a witness before members of the public who cross-examine the witness, give the attorney the opportunity to cross-examine the witness. Okay? If, when the applicant's case is over with, the attorney, if the attorney has a case to present support of, or in opposition to that, that attorney will be afforded that opportunity as well. The only other thing that I want to bring out is that if you are represented by an attorney, your attorney is your spokesperson, that attorney will ask the questions on cross-examination, and that attorney should sum up on your behalf. If you have questions that you want your attorney to ask, that he or she does not ask, I suggest that you get in touch with your attorney, take a second or two to make sure that questions or comments are made by your counsel. You can't be represented by an attorney and also represent yourself. You can only have it one way, either way. So, anybody that is in fact represented by counsel, it's counsel's job, that's what you hire counsel to do your representation in these cases.
Okay. Okay. There's one other order of business before we get started. I would like to request that a motion to allow for a three-minute comment on this application per person, one time to the microphone, with the planning board's discretion if they would like to extend that.
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Avon Clayton.
Yes.
Mayor John Moore.
Yes.
Michael Manzella.
Yes.
Trudy Seifert.
Yes.
Jennifer Soudar.
Yes.
Alexis Taylor.
Yes.
Barbara Kuzak.
Yes. There's some more seats over here. If anybody that's standing on this side would like to come over here, there are seats, there are chairs available. I'd also like a motion at this point for a short recess for a few moments.
So moved.
Second.
I...
Oh, yeah. We...
I.
Let me tell you that the reason is that we're waiting for our engineer.
Yeah, and counsel.
And counsel. Okay? Thank you. All right. Motion to restart, or whatever you need to do. Start whatever you need to do.
Six, 12:00 PM, Wednesday, May 29, 19. Councilwoman Avon Clayton.
Here.
Mayor John Moore.
Here.
Michael Manzella.
Here.
Trudy Seifert.
Here.
Jennifer Soudar.
Here.
Alexis Taylor.
Here.
Barbara Kuzak.
Here. Okay, there are no changes in the agenda. There's only, there's one presentation that we have today at the special meeting of Asbury Partners LLC. Ready to get started.
Why don't we get the council's appearance to the record for both sides? Oh.
I guess I'll sit for this, otherwise you won't pick me up on the microphone, right? Okay. Just make sure everyone can hear me. Okay. I apologize for having my back to everyone, but that's how we're set up. My name is Jennifer Phillips Smith. I'm an attorney with Gibbons PC, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, Asbury Partners.
And good morning, everybody. Thank you for your courtesy. My name is Stuart Lieberman. I'm from the firm Lieberman &amp; Blacker, and I represent Save Asbury's Waterfront. Thank you very much. And I'm guessing you're going to go back down there until it's time for you to go, right? Is that how you want me to do it?
Well, I think we're going to discuss, get the procedural issues out of the way first, so that we can get into the substance of the matter at this. And I think right up front, you've challenged the notice. I've looked at that. I've also got a response from counsel. So, I'll let both of you state your case based on the notice, and then we'll have a ruling.
That's fine. Thanks a lot. The problem with the... Do you mind if I stay seated? All right. The problem with the notice is that the notice went to some of the condos, the associations. I have two unit owners in one association who didn't get it, and just the management company got it. Now, counsel says, and I understand what counsel says, she relied on the clerk's list. And it is true that there's case law that indicates that you have a right to rely on the clerk's list. And I appreciate that. The problem is, is that Mr. Cox, who wrote the book, that's sort of the accepted Bible for those who do this land use, indicates that in his view, individual unit owners should be served. And we quoted that. And I think that with a project of this importance, that's what should happen. Now, I think the problem is, is that the clerk's office gave a deficient list. My adversary does point to two unpublished decisions that indicate that in their view, serving the condo board is sufficient. But when you, and they rely on the statute, Mr. Cox takes a different position, and I think the distinction seems to be that in terms of serving the board, a condo board, serving the management company is enough, because the board has control over the common areas. They have their own separate needs. But in terms of serving the individual unit owners, the way he sees it and the way I see it, and is that, that should go to the, to the addresses of the unit owners. It's a novel question. I think, I think it's an important question. I don't know how much we can do with it tonight, but I'm putting it on the record. I'm reserving my rights. Thank you for your courtesy.
Thank you. We did have a chance to review the letter that came in today, and we are not relying on a treatise and one man's opinion. We're relying on the statute and what the appellate division has ruled explicitly on this issue of the law. The statute in Section 12 of the Municipal Land use Law specifically indicates that notice is sufficient when served on the condominium association in the case of any unit owner whose unit has a unit above or below it. We think that's clear. If you serve the condominium association, you have served everyone in that building. That's what the law says. The appellate division has specifically upheld that twice, both in the context of Hoboken, when it was in a similar condominium building, and explicitly stated in one case that notice the condominium association is therefore sufficient under the language of the MLUL. Individual notice need not be given to the owners of each condominium unit. So, we think it's clear, based on the clear language of the statute, and based on what the appellate division has held, that by serving the condominium association, which was on the certified list, we satisfied all the requirements of Section 12 of Municipal Land Use Law.
The statute speaks for itself. It's not the first time I've had to answer the question. Clear language of the statute is quoted by the attorney. Jurisdiction is, service was proper, orders were sectioned. That's what drives it.
Okay.
Now, and the other thing that we mentioned is, it's my understanding that there are people outside.
We have a fire official here, so we don't have a problem with that.
I just would like to clear that for the record. Are there people outside that have not been allowed in?
Yeah. There's nobody outside. In the back? In the back, okay. We're good.
Okay. So, just, I don't know if it was picked up for the record, but the fire official indicated that there's no one outside.
Thank you very much.
And just also for the record, behind me, there are a few open seats for anyone who's standing and would like to sit.
I'm one of them. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
A matter of protocol, our standard procedure is, with these types of applications, or any type of application, our staff always gets involved, not only with questions, but sometimes with testing. So, before you swear your witnesses, I'd like to swear in our engineer and our field planner, so that they're available to both you and the objectors as well.
Thank you.
Please wave your right hand. Do you swear affirming testimony if there are any statements related to the truth? Hold your hand up. Thank your name in your affiliation with the city.
Michael Sullivan, Clark, Kaden, and Swartland.
Jason Fisher, Board Engineer.
Thank you.
See you. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for holding a special meeting this evening and taking time out of your busy schedules to be here. We do appreciate that. Again, my name is Jennifer Phillips Smith. I'm an attorney with Gibbons, and we're here tonight on behalf of Asbury Partners. Asbury Partners is the designated master redeveloper for Asbury Park's waterfront redevelopment area, and they are specifically designated as the redeveloper of the property in question tonight, which is Block 4, 502, Lot 1.23. The property is a vacant parcel that's located between Sixth and Seventh Avenues along Ocean Avenue. The proposal this evening is that we are seeking preliminary and final site plan approval, as well as permission to deviate from some of the guidelines and your architectural standards to construct a pavilion that will house a pool, cabanas, and other amenities. We have four witnesses to present. We will be starting with Gary Handel, who is our architect. We have Sean Delaney from Bowman Consulting, who is our site engineer. We have Tom Bauer from Malillo &amp; Bauer, who's our landscape architect. And we have Keenan Hughes, who is our professional planner. I know that we've already had a discussion on the notice, but for the record, we have provided an affidavit of service to the board demonstrating that we did provide public notice, both mailed and published in accordance with all applicable law. With that, I would like to start by calling up Mr. Handel.
Hello, Mr. Handel is coming up. Why don't we enter into the record the opinion letters from both counsel? Mr. Lieberman's letter dated today, have that as O1. Mr. Lieberman.
Thank you.
Okay. And Smith's letter as well today, we'll have that as A1, please. So, the original of those files from the board are there?
Thank you. Okay. I'm just waiting for the screen to turn back on, and our recess had turned off. The goal today is, being that the city has put in new projectors, we're going to attempt to do this electronically. We have printed out a copy of this to be marked into the record, to be kept with the official record, and we will be marking those smaller identical exhibits as we go along.
Just identify that they're exactly the same, and we'll go in sequence with A2.
Thank you. So, Mr. Handel, I'd like to have you sworn in, so you can begin your testimony.
Do you swear affirming testimony if there are any statements related to the truth? Hold your hand up.
I do.
Say your name with the record and spell your last name.
My name is Gary Handel, H-A-N-D-E-L.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members.
One moment. Before you get started, I have to put you on, put on your qualifications on the record. So, if you don't mind, for the board, explaining your qualifications and background, including your education and licensure.
I am, I have a Bachelor of Architecture from Cornell University, class of 1978. I am the founding principal of Handel Architects. We are an international practice with four offices in New York, Boston, San Francisco, and Hong Kong, with approximately 200 employees. We are the architects for the 9/11 memorial, the new memorial for the victims of Dylann Roof for the, for Mother Emanuel Church, over 50,000 residential units, 5,000 hotel units, several parks' pavilions, and several million square feet of office space, as well as numerous urban planning projects around the world. I am a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey.
Thank you. I'd like to offer Mr. Handel as an expert in the field of architecture.
Thank you.
Mr. Handel, just before you begin your presentation, we're going to start with the aerial, I'm sure you'll reference briefly, and we'll go ahead and mark that as Exhibit A2.
So, this exhibit indicates the site, which is located on the eastern side of Ocean Avenue between Sixth and Seventh Avenue, within the waterfront redevelopment plan, prime renewal area. The site is currently vacant, and is approximately 25,396 square feet, which includes a 20-foot utility easement along Ocean Avenue, and a 15-foot boardwalk easement, easements to the north and south sides of the site. The south access is already constructed and will remain in place, and a new public access will be provided with the construction of the project. To the north and south of the site are vacant lots, and across the street on the western side of Ocean Avenue is an eight-story multifamily building.
Excellent.
The next slide, please.
There we go. So, we will mark this one as Exhibit A3. Can you explain what this exhibit is?
So, this is the ground, the proposed ground floor of the pavilion structure, and indicates all of the proposed uses and its relationship to the surrounding context. The proposed beach club is a single-story structure with rooftop access. The ground floor is raised above the sidewalk by approximately three and a half feet, and was designed to be relatively flush with the elevation of the former boardwalk. The main structural framing is oriented perpendicular to the shoreline, and will be a minimum of 12 inches above the flood elevation, and will be attached to wood piles to comply with construction requirements within a coastal flood zone. The entrance to the project is located on the southern portion of the site, off of Ocean Avenue. There will be steps up to a stoop, which will be framed by an arched opening into the structure. We will also be providing a sloped walkway for accessible access that will end at the stoop, and slope down to the existing grade. We sloped the walkway so that it will not require handrails, and located the walkway so that we could landscape on both sides of it, and help conceal the amount of circulation needed to access a structure 42 inches above the sidewalk. The beginning of the accessible walkway at the sidewalk is located close to the existing accessible street parking at the north side of the project. The ground floor will include approximately 6,000 square feet of enclosed and covered program that will border the western and southern portion of the site, and will include cabanas, changing rooms, and restrooms, back-of-house catering kitchen, outdoor food service area, and mechanical back-of-house. The kitchen area will contain a refrigerated trash area. The deliveries and waste disposal will be through the access door within the kitchen that connects to the existing south public accessway. The L-shaped configuration for the enclosed space was chosen on the west and south side to help maximize sun exposure on the deck, with lounge areas on the north and east side facing south and west. The open area of the ground level is approximately 11,900 square feet, and will include a 100-foot-long pool and outdoor seating area of lounge chairs, daybeds, cafe-style tables and chairs. In addition, as is typically the case, the exact floor plan within the development footprint will likely have minor changes as we finalize construction drawings. For example, following our May 4th planning submission, we have slightly modified the internal plans to reduce the pool width from 25 feet to 21 feet, to help provide better circulation around the pool, and we eliminated an internal stair to the roof deck that was located next to the elevator. The two external stairways are still provided. These changes are reflected on the slide, but do not impact the site plan. The pool will be within a concrete shell that will extend below the flood elevation. The structure of the shell will be designed to withstand tidal action, as is prescribed in the code. The pool shell will be, will also be pile-supported. This fully complies with all applicable regulations, and will be reviewed by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, as required by the CAFRA permit. The outdoor area will be wood decking with the eastern and northern edge to be sand, and will be enclosed with a wood fence currently envisioned at a height of seven and a half feet. Aside from the entry along Ocean Avenue, we are proposing access to the pedestrian walkway, which leads to the boardwalk and beach at the southeast corner. On the north side, we are providing egress adjacent to the cabanas, leading to the pedestrian access path.
Okay. Now, I know this is the, the floor plan without color. I'm going to scroll down to the next exhibit to ask you a question. This should be familiar to anyone who came out to the city council meeting or the TRC. We'd like to mark this exhibit. I think we are up to A4. Can you explain A4, and specifically what the red versus the blue is?
Sure. Thank you. The ground level coverage exhibit shows the breakdown of enclosed versus open at the ground level, with the red representing 6,207 feet of enclosed space, and the blue representing 11,903 square feet of open outdoor deck. The total ground floor area, including the open enclosed base, is approximately 18,110 square feet.
Okay. All right. Moving on to what we will mark, A5. What is Exhibit A5?
Exhibit A5 shows the roof deck, and this roof level will be accessed via an elevator that is located on the south side of the project, adjacent to the entry area. We are also providing an open-air convenience stair located, located behind the outdoor food and beverage area, and a secondary stair on the north side of the roof. The elevator enclosure, along with the storage area, is approximately 484 square feet. The remainder of the roof deck is open, and is approximately 5,296 square feet. The roof area will be covered with wood decking, and will have lounge chairs and daybeds, with the southern deck area having a shade structure approximately 10 feet high, and 26 and a half by 28 feet in size, made up of metal posts, cables, and translucent netting. Roof drainage will be through deck drains located under the finish deck, and connected to internal drain leaders, and discharged into the stormwater system. The elevator storage enclosure will also house mechanical equipment on the roof. The equipment will be shielded on all sides by a six-foot-high wall.
And I know that that was a question that was raised in one of the professionals' reports, but there, there will be no mechanical equipment that is outside of the bulkhead. Is that accurate?
That is accurate and correct.
All right. So, we'll mark this next exhibit as A6, the roof deck coverage plan, which again has the red and the blue. Can you explain what the red and the blue mean?
Again, so, the roof coverage exhibit shows the breakdown of enclosed versus open space at the roof level, with the red representing 484 square feet of enclosed space, and the blue representing 5,296 square feet of open outdoor deck. The total roof deck area, including open and enclosed space, is approximately 5,780 square feet, and is approximately 32% of the ground floor area.
So, the 484 square feet of enclosed space that's there, that's just the bulkhead for the elevator and the mechanicals, et cetera?
Yes, and it's the minimum that's required in order to provide handicapped access and to screen the mechanical spaces required by the project.
Got it. Thank you. Moving along then to the next exhibit, which is the west elevation, and that I will go ahead and mark as Exhibit A7. Can you explain what Exhibit A7 is?
So, A7 is the west elevation of the project facing onto Ocean Avenue. The goal for the project was to provide a clean modernist design by using a simple massing and rich materials, in keeping with typical beachfront vernacular. The style does not adhere to the preferred Mediterranean revival, arts and crafts, or modern styles that are outlined in the waterfront redevelopment plan, as we believe that those requirements speak more to traditional buildings that have a base, middle, and top. This being a single-story structure with a singular function, we wanted to use elements common to the beach. Using wood and landscape, we wanted to provide a unifying design that we believe is both visually pleasing and integrates into the context. The west elevation, which fronts Ocean Avenue, will have beach grass that will gently rise up to the deck, and then transform into a garden wall to provide a soft edge along the avenue. The building itself will be clad with wood planks on the Ocean Avenue side, and then turn the corner on both the north and south side for approximately 22 feet. The wood planks will be alternating six-inch boards running parallel and perpendicular to Ocean Avenue, giving an articulated wall that is not flat, and will give a modern interpretation of typical wood siding. A stainless steel cable system will be installed over wood cladding to allow the vines to grow up the wall. The entrance to the beach club will be through a shallow, sloped arch, flanked by tinted glass, by tinted glass panels, which were previously presented as an orange tint, and are now a blue-green tint. During non-operations, a roll-down shutter will close off the archway. Within the garden wall will be solid plank shutters with vertical hinges that in-swing to each of the cabanas, to provide light and air for the rooms.
I know we'll get to an exhibit in a moment that talks a little bit more about the shutters, but on the archway that's shown on this exhibit, just to be clear, there's no door on the archway, right?
There's, there is no door. It's open during, the times when the club is open, and then a shutter would come down when the, when the club is closed.
Next, I'd like to turn to the exhibit that we will mark A8, which is labeled as the north elevation. Can you describe the architectural style for the north elevation?
With the side elevation, you can see how the site slopes up three and a half feet from the street to the existing boardwalk. The building height from the existing sidewalk along Ocean Avenue to the roof deck is an average of 15 and a half feet, and from the east side of the boardwalk, it is approximately 12 feet. There's a four-and-a-half-foot-high parapet along the west side of the structure that wraps in 22 feet on both the north and south side. The parapet is constructed of wood, of wood cladding. The remaining of the railing at the roof deck level will be metal with cable infills. The elevator enclosure at the roof extends an additional 15 foot 8 inches above the roof deck, for a total height of 31 feet from the sidewalk, or 27 foot 8 inches from the boardwalk.
Okay. Now, on to the next exhibit.
Not yet.
Not yet. I'm sorry. One more question about the north elevation.
The north elevation will consist of wood cladding to the western portion with stainless steel cable system for the vines to climb. The remainder of the elevation will be an approximately seven-and-a-half-foot-high fence that will be composed of wood planks.
Okay. So, I was jumping the gun a little, but now on to Exhibit A9, which is the south elevation. So, we talked about the north, and now we're on the south elevation, marking Exhibit A9. Can you tell us a little bit about the south elevation?
We're not on the south. We swear. And the south elevation will have the same... The south elevation will have the same wood cladding and stainless steel cabling along the Ocean Avenue side with the remainder of the structure to be a stucco finish. The far eastern portion of this elevation is the same fence that is on the north side wrapping around the east portion of the property and terminating on the south side into the stucco box. This portion of the fence will have a door to provide access from the beach, beach club to the boardwalk. The later bulkhead that will be clad in the same wood plank system and extends from the east side of the bulkhead, extending from the east side of the bulkhead will be posts and cables infilled with a translucent netting to provide shade for a portion of the roof deck.
So just so I have it clear on exhibit A9, the area that's in the lighter cream color, that's the stucco, correct?
That's the stucco, and then the green is the vine-covered wood planking system. And then beyond, you can see the bulkhead for the elevator structure.
And that's the bulkhead that's only a total of 484 square feet?
484 square foot bulkhead, yes.
Okay. So now, we've looked at the front. We've looked at each side. Now, this exhibit, A10, that I will mark as exhibit A10. I believe this is the view from the beach. Is that accurate?
Yes, this is the east elevation from the boardwalk. The east elevation is the same fence as discussed earlier, which will span across the entire property on this side. The fence will be solid but articulated with different thicknesses and widths of vertical bands. With this exhibit, we're also showing the height relationship between the beach club and the eight-story North Beach condominium project that is directly across the street on Ocean Avenue.
Okay. And so when I'm looking this, the darker color brown at the bottom, that's the fence, correct?
Yes, you see the fence in the foreground. There's some furniture, which will be explained in the site plan explanation, and then beyond it, you can see the roof deck area and then the screening fence element that fronts onto Ocean Avenue and the 484 square foot bulkhead.
So even though this is a two-dimensional picture, there's actually some distance between the fence and the cabanas that are behind it, that lighter brown color?
Sure. It slopes down towards the boardwalk.
Now, I promised we'd get back to the shutter, and here we are. I will mark this exhibit as exhibit A11, the fence detail and shutter detail. And I'd like for you to just go over in a bit more detail exactly how the proposed fence would be constructed and then how the proposed shutters will function.
Sure. So prior meetings and comments had been asked to provide more detail of the fence and the cabana shutters. So the image on the left is a perspective and plan of the fence. The fence will be alternating flat and perpendicular boards similar to the Ocean Avenue facade with the flatboards reaching a height of 6 foot 6 inches and the perpendicular boards extending 12 inches higher to a total height of 7 and 1/2 feet. By alternating the board orientation and creating a picket fence top, we believe that this provides a unique design along the boardwalk and will also lighten the overall appearance of the fence. We also believe that this articulation meets the requirements of articulation as defined in the waterfront redevelopment plan.
Now, before you get to the shutter, and this is just so I understand it and perhaps to explain to everyone else here, my understanding for the fence is that one board will be flat and then the next board will turn out, and then the next board will be flat and the next board will be turned out so that it will actually articulate in and out over the course of the fence.
And it's a, you know, it's a modern interpretation of a board and batten cladding with the battens extending up to create the pickets, which we actually think will provide a high degree of articulation as you're walking along the boardwalk as your view will change as you approach it on the oblique.
And I know you mentioned this, but the solid part where you have both the flatboards and the boards that are perpendicular, that section, does that only reach 6 and 1/2 feet?
That reaches 6 and 1/2 feet, and then the pickets extend up for an additional foot.
Okay. Now, also on this exhibit, I see there's a detail of a shutter. Can you explain what that is?
Yeah, so the image on the right is a section through the Ocean Avenue wall at a cabana. The shuttle will be a solid panel with vertical hinges that swing into the cabana and will be comprised of two panels, which will be approximately 18 inches by 24 inches for a total width of 48 inches. The trellis, cable, and vines will extend past the shutter opening and the outside face of the shutter will be clad in the same wood material of the building.
Okay. So if I'm inside the cabana, the shutters will open in towards me?
In a casement fashion, swinging in to the cabanas with the vine structure in place.
Okay. And the hinges are on the side, so they open this way?
Correct.
Okay. And will there be any glass in those openings?
No, they follow the definition of shutters. They're not seen as windows.
Okay. All right. So we'll mark this next exhibit as A12. So on this exhibit, A12, labeled Ocean Ave Rendering, can you describe what this is?
We're going to be showing a series of images that are renderings of both the outside and the inside of the proposed beach club. This first image is a perspective from the south side looking north along Ocean Avenue showing the beach grass, the vine-clad wall, and the tinted glass as well as that arched opening. We're still finalizing the glass color here. You can see that the sloping walkway is hidden behind the beach grass, and our colleagues from Mellow and Bauer will talk more about that landscape.
Okay. And this is the side of the building where those shutters are located. Is that accurate?
Behind the vine screen, yes.
Okay. All right. We'll mark this next exhibit as exhibit A13, the boardwalk rendering. Can you explain what we're looking at here?
Yes, this view is taken from the proposed boardwalk looking north, showing the fence with the proposed seating and planters along the boardwalk. The larger building behind the beach club is the eight-story North Beach condominiums across Ocean Avenue. As a condition of approval, the planters and benches would be recommended to be included within the boardwalk infrastructure. You can see the lower portion of the fence rising to the 6 and 1/2-foot height there and then the more translucent nature of the pickets that rise for the additional foot there. You can see the stucco portion of the building that houses the infrastructure components of the project, the roof trellis in the background.
We'll mark this next exhibit as exhibit A14. Can you explain what exhibit A14 is?
In this view, you can see the pool in the center with cabanas on the right side, seating on the left side. At the opposite side of the pool is the outdoor food and beverage area, and above that is the rooftop sun deck with a shade structure and elevator enclosure. The design and location of the furniture are illustrative and subject to change.
So we're not showing this to count duck chairs today, correct?
Not today.
So the next exhibit we'll mark as exhibit A15, which is entitled View Looking East. Can you explain what we're looking at here?
Yes, this view is taken approximately 61 feet off of the sun deck, so it's not an elevation that you could actually stand in looking down at the pool and seating and out towards the ocean. Here, you can see the sand area that will have lounge chairs, the beds and seating areas on the right side of the image. Again, the design and location of the furniture are only indicative at this point.
So this is not the view from standing on the sun deck. This is a literal bird's-eye view. Is that accurate?
It's the seagull's view, yes.
Okay. Okay. We'll mark the next one as exhibit A16. Can you explain what exhibit A16 is?
This is an additional interior image looking at the lounge area next to the outdoor food and beverage area. Again, the design and location of the furniture are only indicative at this point.
Okay. Now, we've gone through the various different exhibits that you prepared, and I have a few follow-up questions for you. And so first, I'd like to start by turning to the report that we received from Clark Caton Hints dated May 21, 2019. And just for the board, is that something that you need me to mark into evidence or is that already considered part of the record?
You can mark it.
So this is a report that is dated May 21, 2019 from Michael Sullivan and Donna Miller of Clark Caton Hints, the board's professionals.
B1.
B1? Which we will mark as exhibit B1.
The shell.
So through this letter, there's certain pages where they go over the waivers that they believe may be required from the architectural standards. And before we dive into that directly, I first want to back up a bit and talk about the style of this building. You mentioned before it is not Mediterranean, Arts and Crafts, or Modern. Is that accurate?
Yes, as noted earlier, the Mediterranean Revival, Arts and Crafts, or Modern styles outlined in the waterfront redevelopment plan, we believe speak more to traditional buildings that have a base, middle, and top. This being a single-story structure with a singular function, we do not believe they should apply. We would characterize this project as a clean, modern design using a simple massing and rich materials to be in keeping with a typical beachfront vernacular.
Now that said, I'd still like to walk through what has been suggested may be needed as relief. And to do that, I'm going to ask you a few questions as background. I will say that we are going to have our planner come up at the end to tie this together and speak to the justification for the relief, but I would like Mr. Handel to put on the record the information that Mr. Hughes will need at the end to make those determinations. So, starting with, in the section of the code or the waterfront redevelopment plan, building elements, flash walls, materials, and building walls. I'll note, the waterfront redevelopment plan doesn't have code section numbers, which makes this a little tricky. Normally, for an ordinance, I'd say turn to 12:7-1, and we would proceed. For this, I'm just going to call out what sections of the code.
And when you do that, I'm sorry, when you do that, can you also tell us what page you're on? That would be helpful.
Of the waterfront redevelopment plan?
No, 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 of the report.
We're going to come back to the report momentarily.
Okay.
First, we'll start by going through some of the questions. Building elements, walls, materials, and building walls. I note that the redevelopment plan allows for stone, brick, stucco, cast stone, wood shingle, and wood or hardy plank clapboard. Can you describe the types of materials we are proposing in this project for the exterior?
We are using stucco in the element that we outlined, and instead of clapboard, we're using the vertical patterning of the flatboard and the projected batten, which we feel is more appropriate to this low-slung structure that the horizontal clapboards, I think, would only emphasize the long length of the project and the vertical nature of the cladding that we're using. Actually, we think gives a much higher degree of articulation for that.
So the plan allows for certain types of wood, shingling, hardy board, drop siding board and batten, and I believe you're indicating that instead of using those vertical types of wood design?
Instead of using the horizontal?
Horizontal, I'm sorry.
We're using the vertical.
So that's why I'm not the architect. Okay.
And I'm not an attorney.
All right.
Never been accused of being an attorney.
I recognize you. I remember you from the building project.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So when we also look at openings, material, windows, there's an indication that windows shall be made out of painted aluminum, wood, or vinyl, and shall have clear glass. And I'll admit, when we looked over this, there's the underlying question, are the openings windows? And in your opinion, are the openings windows?
We don't believe they are windows because they don't have glass, they don't have aluminum frames. They're shut. We believe they fall under the definition of shutters instead, and we meet the requirements for vertically hinged shutters and that they're the same size as the opening. So we think they follow much more closely to the definition of shutters.
Okay.
And they are shutters.
And the redevelopment plan specifically allows shutters that are either louvered or paneled, size and shape to match the associate openings. Do our shutters that are proposed comply with that?
They do.
Okay. All right. And also, requirements for shutters in attached elements number six of the redevelopment plan. Vertically hinged shutters, when provided, shall coincide in size to the opening with which it is associated, and shutters may be made of any durable material. Do the shutters here qualify as vertically hinged shutters?
They do, and they are.
Okay. All right. The same goes, there was questions about whether we met the criteria for openings, configuration, windows, indicating that windows should be single, double, or triple-hung with operable casements. Is it your opinion that the openings provided here are not, in fact, windows at all?
Yes, that is correct. They are not.
And there was a question from the planner about whether we met the requirements for openings configurations doors, which indicate that doors shall be hinged. There was a question specifically about the front opening. As you testified earlier, is the front opening a door?
So we have no traditional door for the front. The opening will be open with the glass panels during the times when the club is operational, and then there will be a roll-down shutter when the club is closed. All other doors will be side-hinged and meet the definitions within the design guidelines.
There was also a question about building articulation. The waterfront redevelopment plan specifies that overly long buildings should be broken down to scale comparable to that of the buildings on the rest of the block face. No street walls should extend beyond 100 feet without a break. This can be accomplished by articulating the building in a plan or elevations. Inches may be enough. Is the building frontage articulated?
We believe so. The building facade and fence are designed with the alternating perpendicular and parallel boards that we've gone through, as well as with the green screen. We believe this gives an in-and-out articulation due to the orientation of the wood and the richness of the landscape that's provided.
And as the redevelopment plan specifically states, inches may be enough, how many inches do you think are between the articulation of the flatboards and the perpendicular boards?
It's approximately 6 inches.
Okay. And how about the back fence? Is the back fence articulated?
The back fence is articulated in the same way. It's also vertically articulated, as mentioned, with the 6 and 1/2-foot section and then with the picket top rising for the additional foot.
Okay. This question also about building frontages and base facade. And for this, there's specifically a comment. Okay. This comment corresponds to the planner's letter from Clark Caton Hints. It's on page 7, item number D3, a question about building frontages. It was indicated that there's a recommendation in the plan on how buildings should, not shall, but should be designed, specifying inclusion of gallery or arcade, shop fronts with awnings, residential stoops, fences and porch, landscape front yards. Does the design of this building incorporate any of those features?
Yes, you know, there are five criteria that are listed within the base facade criteria. The first is gallery or arcade. We think it's not applicable here because we're a one-story building. A shop front with awning also not applicable because we're not a shop. A residential stoop, it's not a residential building, but we do have a stoop, a small porch, the front and porch, which we, you know, so we do have, and we've talked about the fence and the porch as well, and the landscape front yard, which, yes, we do have the entire front area is landscaped.
So although the redevelopment plan lists these as guidance, not mandatory, not shall, but should, is it your opinion that the design of the facade still meets several of them?
Yes, we believe we comply where applicable.
It was pointed out in the planner's letter, a question about the avoidance of blank walls. Again, as something that should, but not shall, be avoided. How have you, in the design of this facade, designed it in such a way to avoid blank walls?
Again, as mentioned, the idea really is to provide a very vibrant, richly textured wall, which is created by the articulated fence that has been outlined along with the cable trellis and the living wall, which our landscape consultants will talk more about, and the unique arched opening to the project, which we think creates a defining architectural feature.
Okay. Now, I'm now moving on to the part of the redevelopment plan that concerns building parts, which is also within the architectural guidelines. And there was a suggestion in the Clark Caton Hints letter that wall finish shall be primarily smooth stucco or its visual equivalent. Have you incorporated stucco into this design?
Yes, we have.
And can you remind everyone where that is?
Yeah, so that's in the box at the center of the project, which includes the kitchen, the restrooms, the entry assembly, you know, at the heart of the project.
Excellent. Just give me one second. We lost our exhibits for a moment. Okay. But in addition to stucco as allowed pursuant to the other part that we talked about earlier, the redevelopment plan, there is wood materials being used here.
Yes, wood is used extensively throughout the project, is outlined in the building elevations and seen in the renderings.
Okay. There was also mentioned in both the planning report and a prior letter that we received about building parts number three and four in the redevelopment plan, which involves voids, solids, and fenestration. First, can we talk about what it means to have voids and solids in architectural design?
It typically refers to window and opening patterns. You know, in the case of the pavilion structure, the voids and openings in this case would refer to the large arch opening at the entrance to the project. The solids and voids could refer, in this case, to the articulation of the fence tops.
Okay. Okay. Technically, though, this design does not meet the requirements to have voids to solids. I'm going to ask the question in a moment, but just to lay the framework, the redevelopment plan requires a void-to-solid ratio of no more than 45% and a solid-to-void ratio of a minimum of 20%. And does the design as presented technically meet those requirements?
It does not because it is not appropriate for the use of the project.
When you say that, is this a shop front?
It, yes, there is, there is no, there is no storefront in the, you know, in the project.
Okay. There was also some questions about window sills and about whether windows are flush, and this is building parts numbers 10, 11, 12, and 13 in the redevelopment plan. For all of these requirements concerning whether windows will be hung by casement or whether they're going to be subdivided into, and this is where I wish I were an architect, into lights by muntens?
Mm-hmm.
First of all, what is a mutton?
Mutton is one of the dividing panels in a multi-pane light.
Okay. So, questions about how windows should be subdivided, questions about flush-mounted windows, and questions about lintels and window sills. Is it your opinion that those requirements only apply where the project proposes a window?
They, they refer to windows and apply to windows, in our opinion.
And does this project have windows?
We have no windows.
Okay. Finally, attached elements, storefront glass. The waterfront redevelopment plan provides that storefront glass must be clear, not colored, and then that requirement applies to storefront glass. As a sort of an initial threshold question, are, is there any storefront glass proposed here?
We have no storefronts.
Okay. So, is there any storefront glass?
There is no storefront glass.
The glass that is proposed, is it colored?
It is, it is colored. The color is yet to be determined. We're currently showing it as the, as the, as the blue. It's more, it's merely a decorative element. It is not a storefront.
Okay. I appreciate the answers to those questions. And what we will be doing, just for the board, kind of the preview where we're headed, when Mr. Hughes comes up, we will go through the planner's letter from Clark, Kate, and Hints more sequentially and in detail, using the information that we've received concerning the windows, and doors, and lintels, and muntens, and all of the other architectural design standards. So, turning then to what I'm going to mark, I believe, is B2, because it is the engineering review letter that was prepared by Insight Engineering dated May 22, 2019. And I think B2 is the appropriate mark for that. Most of these comments relate to the engineering design, but there are a handful that relate to the architectural design. So, I'm going to cherry-pick the architectural ones now, and then we'll come back with our engineer to discuss the ones that are more pertinent to the engineering.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, going through, specifically, I'm looking on page three, number eight. There was a comment concerning roof plans and mechanicals. It indicates that roof plans have been required, and there was a question, will any mechanical equipment be located on the roof? And I believe you've already addressed that.
Yes, so there will be mechanical located on the roof bulkhead. It will be fully screened.
So, outside of the bulkhead, there's no mechanical-
That is correct.
So, as a result, we have not submitted a plan showing any mechanical outside of the bulkhead, correct?
Correct.
All right. Number 10 on that same page, there's a question about operations. And I'm going to ask you some of those questions now, to the extent that you know. For this proposed use as a pool club, do you know what the hours of operation are intended to be?
The, the hours of operation have not yet been determined for the club, but they will comply with any applicable city ordinances, just like any other business.
And how about the number of employees, the anticipated number of employees, and the anticipated number of shifts?
So, we know that the master developer has been involved in training local employees at the Salt Club, and we believe that something similar will actually happen here. In preliminary discussions, there's been discussions of up to, between 50 and 75 employees with up to three shifts per day. This may change as the project becomes operational.
And those employees are likely to fluctuate over the course of a season, correct?
Yes, they will be seasonal employees, just like all other employees along the boardwalk.
Okay. There's also a question here about the number of vehicles to be stored or parked on the site. Does the waterfront redevelopment plan require any parking?
The waterfront redevelopment plan does not require any parking for this use or any other commercial business in the area, and none will be provided. So, the answer to the question is zero.
And then, site maintenance. There's a question about how site maintenance will be provided. Are you aware of how that will occur?
There are several components to that. In terms of refuse and recycling, the refuse and recycling will be kept into, in a refrigerated room. It'll be wheeled out the side door for curb, to the curb for pickup. Trash service will be arranged through a private carrier and will be as often as is needed, which will likely vary depending on the point in the season. At least one week of recycling can be stored within the dedicated trash room. For deliveries and loading, they'll be via the side door nearest to the kitchen and will be scheduled during off-peak times as needed.
So, turning then to the, in the insight report to page four, number 12 actually asked that exact question about refuse and recycling, so we'll, we'll move on from there. And then, number 15 asks about demonstrating aesthetically pleasing architectural elements that have been selected for the building. I, I think we covered that pretty extensively, so we'll-
We've done-
Unless there's any questions?
We've done our best.
Okay. On the next page, number 21, there's a question about whether the project has been designed to provide room for at least one week of recyclable material to be stored on the site. Have you had a chance to review that?
Yes, the, the room has been sized to accommodate a week of recycling.
Okay. And it's noted in number 22 that there are no loading spaces proposed as part of the development application. To the extent you know, how will loading occur at the site?
Yes, so deliveries, as mentioned, will be via the side door nearest to the kitchen and will be scheduled during off-peak times as needed.
Okay. And this is not a large supermarket that's going to be getting tractor-trailer deliveries? Is that an accurate assessment?
Yes, they'll mostly be small van-type trucks.
Okay. All right. On page six, item 32B, there was a question about the fencing. And I believe you indicated that the fencing has been designed to articulate with the horizontal and perpendicular boards. And I believe you pointed out in the renderings that there's going to be, which we'll have to say in your testimony further, but that benches and planters could be added outside the exterior wall. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Just trying to get to the rendering of that. Number 37 on the next page, testimony regarding the adequacy of existing slash proposed ADA accessibility. For that, let me scroll back, actually, to another exhibit showing the floor plan. Can you discuss how ADA accessibility will be accomplished in this project?
Yes, so every, every attempt has been made to make sure that the project is fully accessible. So, we mentioned the ramp along Ocean Avenue, which slopes up. It's not a ramp, actually, it's a sloping walkway, since it's been designed to not require handrails, so it can be fully integrated within the landscape. It goes from the entry porch, the stoop at the entrance to the project, to pretty much directly where the existing handicap parking spaces are. And that will get you into the deck level, which will be also fully accessible at that, at that level. And then, to the rooftop area, that's why we have the elevator access and the elevator bulkhead. That 484-square-foot structure is to, is predominantly there in order to provide accessibility for, for handicap patrons to that rooftop level of the, of the project. For access to the beach itself, there will be, in the access in the lower left-hand corner of the project, that will be flush with the boardwalk, so that, again, anyone who's disabled or in a chair, well, a chair can actually access the boardwalk as well, you know, from that, from that point of view.
And then, the last one in the engineering letter is number 40, which asks for testimonies supporting design waivers. We've, we've put in some of that testimony. We have Mr. Hughes to come. I think we've covered that one. And that was the last comment in the letter that I believe pertains to architecture. The others pertaining to engineering, we will cover with our engineer. I think that is all that I have on direct from Mr. Handel. I guess I open it to questions from, from the board, Madam Chairwoman.
Yes. Does the board have any questions of the architect?
I have some questions. We didn't really talk about floodproofing measures at all, and what design features of the building would relate to that, as this is in a VE zone. Is, can you talk to that a little bit? I know, even with the elevator, there's a, there's always concern in a VE zone with the sub-basement, yeah.
Yeah, so we're, so everything's been designed, you know, to comply with, with a VE zone. So, the, so the, the deck level is lifted one foot minimum above the flood zone. All of the cladding is run perpendicular to the beach, the lower walls along, our breakaway walls in order to allow the waters to come through. The pool structure, it's all pile-supported, and those piles are, are, are down to the level required within the, within the VE zone. The, the, yeah.
Okay.
And just as a follow-up question, the applicant will be submitting these plans to the DEP for review to ensure that it's compliant with the cap requirement. Is that correct?
That is, that is absolutely correct. We also have plans to deal with furniture during, during storm zones in terms of either lashing them down, putting them into cabanas, moving them off-site during the off-season. So, it obviously is something that has been designed into the operations of the project. So, thank you for the question.
Another thing that was mentioned in the TRC comments was the utility screening, and I'm not sure you've covered that exactly, but that's, that's in the front of the building, I assume?
There are three locations for the utility areas. There's, there's the, go to the plan, I think, would be the best.
I'm sorry. Let me know when I get to the one you want.
The ground floor plan is probably the best.
Okay. So, the ground floor plan, just for the record in the recording, we had marked as exhibit A3.
So, there's the, up in the upper left-hand corner, there's the water wall, which is actually sunken into the ground, so it's not visible. The transformers will be on the, it's the right, it's the square on the right side. Our colleagues from Melon and Bauer will talk about how it's screened within the landscape elements of the project. The gas meters are located according to the utility company, and they're screened within the green screen element that we've provided for, you know, for the fencing, which Tom Bauer will also talk about. So, we've, we've done our best to screen all of those utilities.
And just as we're looking at exhibit A3 here, the proposed gas meter is up in the upper left-hand corner next to the mechanical room. Am I seeing that correctly?
It is. And you can see that on, on both the north and south sides, the building's been slightly recessed to allow the green screen to project from the building, to allow the green screen to basically be integrated with, predominantly to screen those gas meters.
Can I-
Sure.
Follow-up to Michael's question, where you referred to the insight report, page three of 10, number eight, roof plans, they're going to be screened. How high are the screens going to be from ground level to the top of the screening?
Just to clarify, we're talking about the screening around the mechanical equipment?
Correct.
Okay.
On the roof.
On the roof.
Oh, the, the screens are six feet tall in order to screen those, those equip, the, the mechanical screens on, on top of the roof bulkhead are six feet tall.
Which brings you to what height?
Okay, that's, if you go to the elevation-
Let me know when I get to the right one.
I think that'll work.
Okay.
So, it's a, it's at elevation 42.6, which is about approximately 30 feet six inches.
Thank you.
The 40, the 40, explain the 42.6.
42.6 is an absolute elevation above, above zero, NAD zero.
Above sea level.
NAD zero.
Okay. In my non-architectural terms.
Right.
So, the 30 foot six inches is the height from the street. Is that correct?
It's actually, that's the, the 30 foot six is actually from the boardwalk elevation. There's an additional two foot six at that point, so it'd be 32, 33 feet from the elevation of Ocean Avenue and 30 foot six inches from the boardwalk at that point in time. So, it's always, we always have to be clear about our measuring data.
And just to be clear, that's just that bulkhead section that's 484 square feet, correct?
It's that, that portion only, and that height is predominantly generated by the need to provide handicapped access to that upper level.
I had a question about the architectural guidelines when you're talking about the voids and openings and the avoidance of blank walls. So, I mean, I appreciate the different architectural elements that you're putting into, in terms of articulation, but knowing that, that-
Light?
Oh, sorry. I know the sound. Yeah, sorry. The, the light and sort of having that wall and the west elevation being so, such a block to the view and everything that is, that people are used to having, why wasn't there more of, I know you're talking that we don't have windows, we have shutters, so we don't have to deal with the window rules. But in terms of just knowing that we're trying to avoid those long stretches of buildings, why wasn't there more of a, an effort to include some kind of openings to break that up, when you are going on Ocean Ave there?
So, the openings would actually serve no purpose for, you know, within, within the club. The only opening that we, that really serves a purpose is the arched opening that leads in, which will give a nice vista through the, through the project. The cabanas back up to the Ocean Avenue side, you know, in order to make the plan work. And so, the, you know, having, having windows or shutters opening into those cabanas would not really serve the function of the project.
I understand from the internal plan, but I'm saying from the street view, because the same issues with the, you're saying it's not a storefront, so you don't have to comply with those, but the intent of some of those storefront rules are sort of the same of having that interaction, not that, not viewing into the pool as much as having the light and, you know, going along Ocean Ave, that access to the ocean is obviously the biggest thing for everybody, I imagine. So, anything that could have been done to have, not have that, that blank wall and have some openings, I was just surprised that there wasn't more effort to have openings on that wall.
Can I ask a follow-up question? I, I don't know that I fully appreciate what the purpose of the shutter is on the, on the Ocean Ave side. They, they open into the cabanas, so when you open them, what do you see? Is the wood in front of it, or the greenery, or is it open?
It's, it, it'll be, it's, you'll see the greenery. It's mostly for, it's mostly for ventilation. It's predominantly for ventilation and for a little bit of light. And then, when they are open, you, you will get a different patterning, you know, on, on that wall, because the open shutter will read very differently than the closed, than the closed element. So, you will get a fairly dynamic pattern on that wall.
Can, can I ask a question about, I think it's drawing A7, it was the section and fence detail? It was exhibit A11, but I think the drawing was, yes.
Yes, exhibit A11, yes.
So, it's on wood pilings and the ground floor elevation is 14.6. What is, what's the elevation of the lowest horizontal member?
So, we're looking at, you're talking about the fence structure or the-
No, no, I'm talking about the section, sorry, on the right. The, the section drawing.
I'm sorry, I'm not understa, so the, I'm not understanding what you're-
So, I assume this is on wood pilings-
Correct.
And the ground floor, the top of the ground floor elevation is at 14.6?
14.6, which is one foot above the floodgating.
What's the lowest horizontal?
14.6.
It's, so this, this section is in-
That, that deck runs, so that deck elevation runs throughout the ground floor of the, of the project, so it's pretty consistent throughout the, throughout the project.
Right, I guess, so the, their pilings, I guess, what I'm asking is there, it's on wood pilings, and then it's not just like ground floor all of a sudden, there's a horizontal member that holds the, the ground floor. What's that elevation?
And if I may, I, our engineer has more specifics on the numbers, so I don't want to have Mr. Handel put something on the record that, when Mr. Delaney can speak more clearly to that.
Sure thing. And then, the other question is, are there any gaps in the fencing on the part that's not, not the top part, but below?
No, it's solid below and then open, open above.
Sorry, it's all solid?
Solid, solid below and open above.
Okay.
Solid, but articulating.
I would, I would suggest, just best practices in a, in a V-zone, is that you don't have solid walls. You need actually some gaps because it becomes hazard, actually a hazard to the buildings around it if it, if it is released or comes up. So, actually, it should be designed to have wind or anything that can go through it.
Right, so the, so currently doesn't, except for the bottoms, which are all breakaway, which you can see in that, in that structure.
I, I think probably, and this may come up in your later review, but I think probably the recommendation is going to be that you, you have to have some gaps in that fence. It's not even for visual clarity, it's for, it's for wind.
Understood.
Yeah, so.
And, and that will be- And that will be submitted to the DEP for their review, correct?
Yes, correct.
Can I just ask... I don't mean to jump in front of the board, but since we're on this Exhibit A7, what is the dimension of the board that is projecting from the fence plane? You've got the boards in the plane, and then you've got this projection.
I think it's approximately 6 inches.
It's a 6-inch projection, so it's almost the same width of the board that projecting between those, but it tight.
Correct.
Unless the DEP says...
Exactly.
And that's the same for the front?
Yes, correct.
The front has the same... The wood screen in the front has the same design?
Correct.
Wait, one more quick thing. Is this like a crawl space?
It's really the breakaway zone for the... You know, it's to allow the water to run through.
Okay. And then there's no, like, sheer wall that actually goes below? It's all piling?
It's all piling.
Like, this isn't sheer?
It's all piling, and then with breakaway walls in order to allow the flood to actually happen.
Okay, thanks.
Would you clarify for me on the Ocean Avenue side? So there are going to be two walls, and each of them are going to have the trellis or vines growing up?
On the Ocean Avenue wall, it would be... It's one wall, which is articulated with the detail of the fencing, and then applied onto that is the cabling, which my colleague from Melon and Bauer will talk about, which will support the plant growth.
But where are the cabanas backed up to? Because there is going to be space for the ADA access, correct?
Correct. So you come... So there's... If we go back to the plan... So the sloping walkway will take you... That's that diagonal path that takes you from Ocean Avenue up to the entrance zone to the porch that takes you into the arched opening of the project and into the project. And that... And then the cabanas are indicated along the back wall, being adjacent to the Ocean Avenue facade.
That's a little tough to tell on the illustration, because over here you can see it, but on the drawing, I mean, on the color and illustration, we can't see ADA.
And that was my next question.
Because it's integrated in... It's integrated into the landscape, which my colleague from Melon and Bauer can explain.
Okay, all right. Can you actually clarify one statement you made about the ramp access up on the Oceanside front? You said that it's attached, or is it... You described it as like not elevated, but actually...
No, it's... It is... It's integrated... The ramp?
Yeah.
Is actually not a ramp, because it's at a slope that is technically just a path. So it doesn't require handrails if it's not more than a 5% slope.
I got it, that's what you're saying.
And so, which was our goal, which was so that we could actually create a harmonious landscape there and actually have that path actually work through the landscape from the entry porch back down to where the handicap parking spaces there are, which Tom Bauer can also talk more about.
Okay. And I know parking spaces aren't required per the redevelopment plan, but there is actually a, you know, law, I believe, you should just look into it, that does require as part of the public access and the public trust doctrine that you do parking, so maybe that's something worth looking into, just since you answered that question.
Regarding the food and beverage area, it looks like it was designed as a bar. Was it intended to be a bar?
I actually don't... I don't know what... I think there is no... Currently, there is no liquor license. I'm not sure whether the applicant will apply for one at this point in time.
And one more thing. So signage was not submitted as part of this application, and I think that we would be very interested in especially what the public access signage is. I think, you know, you're from New York City, you know how they effectively privatize a lot of public spaces, so I think signage would end up being a really important thing indicating it.
We'll follow up.
And just for clarity, are you asking about signage sort of in the two easement areas?
All signage, generally.
Just, I guess for the record, there's no business signage being proposed as far as wall signage or anything. In fact, right now, there's no signage proposed at all. What, you know, there's no sign going on that says "beach club" or anything like that. Okay.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, going back to the insight report, page 3 of 10, which you brought up, number 10, you asked the hours of operation that hasn't been decided yet. What are the months of operation?
So the current plan is that the venue will operate between Memorial Day and Labor Day, but it may also have... Operate during the spring and fall when outdoor use is appropriate. So it isn't fully determined yet. It'll be weather-dependent, and it'll also be dependent on demand. So we... I know the applicant would like to be open as long as it's accessible and that there's somebody who would want to be there.
Thank you.
So but you'd also had mentioned about the hours of operation. You mentioned that that was within the city code. What is that?
I think the testimony is just, if there is a city code, we will comply with it, but we're not aware of any restrictions. But if there are restrictions, we'll comply.
Any other questions from the board regarding architecture? Any questions from our professionals regarding architecture?
Something... Somebody came up that wasn't covered and I don't know if the person can cover it, but is there any plan to have any address system or speakers or anything integrated within the building that would be used to make it... Make it fun, or whatever. The reason I ask is we're evaluating the lighting, you know, in case...
Sure. Sure.
Area, but anything about sound?
Yeah, so all... The only conversations that we've had to date are that the venue will operate in compliance with the Noise Control Act, which is NJSA 13.1, you know, GDS 1, which is... And all of the associated Department of Environmental Protection regulations, so that we know that we're... We need to operate within that overarching frame. So that's all that's been discussed, is that we will operate within that statute.
That's it for both.
That's it.
And will there be any other discussions about later on? Just want to make sure where we are with what may... What events might be held there? What music, liquor, liquor, whatever? Will that be discussed later? Or is that with the architect?
I don't believe Mr. Handel can answer that.
Okay, so we'll do that. We'll do that later. Okay. Anything else from the professionals? Yeah, they won't be...
Please. It's a good idea.
I agree. I agree. Well, we will also have other discussions about potential signage, or is that...
There's no signage proposed.
Okay, so how will someone know where the ramp is? How will someone know how to get in?
We can speak with... I mean, you're talking about directional, like functional directional signage.
Yeah, functional flow.
We can work with your board professionals on that type of signage. My point is, there's no...
Sorry?
I think the indication is that the court stenographer's having trouble hearing us over the crowd noise. There's no business signage proposed. We could certainly work with the board professionals if there's any required safety or directional signage.
Could we require signage? I mean, I'll tell you why. It's because it's like... It's effectively like acting as a speakeasy, like it's like there's no signage, so no one can find out about it, so no one whatever, so it makes it even more privatized rather than...
Yeah, I don't think that's the intent.
No, but I mean, in the same way, like if you don't have signage indicating that it is even a private beach club, then people don't have information even to be able to find out what it is, which I would think that we would want to at least require signage, one, for public access, and two, for the building itself.
It's actually... It's interesting, because typically we hear the opposite from boards, to reduce and eliminate signage. I think the intent was to keep it clean, so no signage has been proposed at this time. But if there's safety signage that's requested, we could certainly work with your board professionals.
Aesthetically, I think we could require signage.
I think it's a... I think the conversation... I think the two important things... Most important thing is the public access.
Safety and public access.
Public access is very important, and that's a state-of-the-art thing.
Yeah, you have to do it.
To be able to have public access, we want to make sure that that's reinforced here, whether that's with...
Excuse me, please, the professionals have to speak. We can't...
Right.
We're recording all this, so any outside noise causes some issues.
So we want to make sure if there's signs that are indicative of how a report manages that access, we would integrate them within what you're doing. So I think that's a personal...
That's... Yeah, thank you.
I think that address is very important to a public safety area. You know, presuming this gets built the way it is, most folks are going to know where it is from the emergency services, but still, an address is important. And I think the third, well, you know, the third thing on the list is some sort of identification of this business and what it is.
Thank you.
We can have that discussion. I imagine at some point, we'll take a break and we'll have a discussion regarding that. But I don't know that Mr. Handel can answer that, because as of right now, there's nothing on the plans shown.
Any other questions from our professionals of the architect? No? Okay, we're going to open the open questions to the public for the architect? Okay, come on out. So once again, Jack, do you want to mention about if there are questions? Our attorney will take care of those for the representation of SAW.
Yeah, well, we'll let the attorney finish.
Okay.
And then anybody who's represented by the attorney is not going to then cross-examine the witness.
Well, I only represent the organization. I don't represent any individuals.
The members of the organization, you're their counsel.
Well, I've never heard that.
No?
No.
You're not?
Then the organization exists without people?
No, but I represent the organization, not the individuals. So my question is this, if I am not... If they... Why are people going to want to come and express their views? There's no question. So can I...
When I ask them, I'm like...
So the question is, can I... The two ways we always do it is, either I call them up and ask my witnesses and ask them what their positions are, and that comes out that way, or you just let them come up and comment, which is a lot quicker. But obviously, I get a chance, if you could preclude them, then I could pull them up. I would rather you just let them come up, do their three minutes, and get it over.
The way we operate is if you represent a group, anyone in that group, if you want to call them as a factual witness for the case, you can do that. If you're going to call them up and ask them an opinion?
Yes.
Then you have to qualify them as an expert in the field and the opinion that you're going to ask.
I really disagree with you.
You don't have to agree with me.
Well, no, 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 I swear to God.
I'm telling you how this board has run for 20 years, since I've been...
That's fine.
If people are represented by attorneys, we don't allow the attorney and then individual clients to come up. It doesn't... You don't get two shots at it. If you're represented by counsel, counsel comes up and does represent you. And if members of an organization hire you, those members, you're their counsel. You present their case, you cross-examine witnesses, you call your own witnesses.
Right.
We're fine with all of it.
Right.
But we're not going to have you two representatives represent this group of all these individuals that walk in the group, and then have each individual person in that group come up and ask the same questions and make comments.
Well, I understand that. For the record, I disagree with you. And I understand, but let me explain to you why. I represent the organization, not the individual. Just because I represent an organization, they're not disenfranchised. This is a public organization. It's part of the government's... It's administrative agency government, and they don't forfeit their rights to petition the government and express their views just because an organization that they're a member of hired a lawyer. So I understand your position. If that's your position, you might have to take it up another time, but for the record, I disagree with it. So the way, you know, even the boards that I do, and I've been doing this for 30 years too, is...
I'm 41.
Okay, that's fine. Well, I don't think we have a competition.
No, no.
But I don't want it.
Please, please.
Is either you let them express their view, because they're not represented by me, an organization they happen to be a member of is, or I call them and ask their position. But they shouldn't be disenfranchised. But you can talk about it later, or whatever it is, it is.
Do you have anything to say on this?
I actually just have one question. If you're indicating that the organization is distinct from its members?
Yes.
What is the standing of the organization to be here?
Oh, it's an environmental organization. It's a local organization where its members participate in recreation, they live in the area, they work in the area, they walk past witnesses going to be on a frequent basis, and I think that they have to... They have to.
Does Save Asbury independently own any property?
No.
Does Save Asbury as a... Well, what is it, first of all?
So look, I...
Is it a 501(c)(3)? Is it a...
It's an unincorporated... It's going to be incorporated. It's an unincorporated organization with a tax identification. But, look, I represent the Sierra Club, I represent all these organizations. I often have people who are members of the Sierra Club. Just because I represent the organization, they're not precluded from having this, you know? I mean, so it's usually not an issue. I'm not going to fight with you. I disagree with you respectfully. I think I have, you know, we can have a respectful disagreement, and, you know, it might become relevant later. I don't think we want to have to redo anything. I think you should just err on the side of push.
My recommendation is this, for the sake of a potential appeal on this case, I would give in on this point. Plus, if we don't, some judge may determine that we violated someone's rights, and that would just be a waste of a whole lot of time. So my suggestion is that you do it this way, but you limit the testimony of people to relive the testimony.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And we don't get a gerrymandering situation, and that's fine.
Okay. So then are we suggesting... Are we suggesting that we hear testimony?
Let counsel cross-examine the witness, and I think...
And then allow...
Based on the side of caution and prudence, let the public have their say.
Okay.
And just one clarification, though, on that. When it comes to questioning and cross-examination, after Mr. Lieberman goes, are then each individual member going to be able to come up and ask independent questions?
Yes.
The public? The public can.
Yeah.
Not the public in general, the members of... I assume there are people in the audience who are members of SAW and people who are not, that not everyone here is a member. So just for clarification, you're indicating that our witness is going to be cross-examined both by the organization and the individual?
Are you talking about public comment or... The individual members actually coming up and cross-examining the witness?
I think that what I'm talking about is that the individuals are not precluded from doing what they could do without being... In other words, they could...
I'm not talking about...
They could cross-examine, they could do whatever they wanted to. I would ask all of them to be... To limit to whatever rules this board has, which I think is three minutes, but I'm not is three minutes, but I'm not sure. And I would ask that any member of the organization that I represent not duplicate the same thing, and that they'd be mindful of the board's time, and the professional's time, and the attorney's time, and the expert's time. But, you know, and I would always ask that. And I'm going to do the same thing. But I would urge that we adhere to that.
For the record, I do disagree with the legal determination. And we do reserve that if this starts getting to the point where it's duplicative and duplicative, that I will be bringing that up.
No, that's totally, that's totally fine. And we have requested, as I started in the beginning of this meeting, saying, any duplicative statements, comments, we ask that, that everything is on record, so once it's mentioned once, it's on record. So if there's something new that has to be said, we urge you to speak up.
And I think for clarity in the record, I would appreciate if each person that's asked a question, that they identify whether they are or are not a member of the organization.
That's fair.
It's a relevant question.
Is it relevant, really?
Yeah, we're going to allow them. Doesn't mean they can't cheat, we just ask if they're a member of the organization.
I don't think people should apply it to selfless clubs. I don't think it should apply to that. But let go, whatever you want.
Let's, let's, let's.
Alright, thanks.
Okay.
I want to, first, quite a few concerns. How many people, how many customers do you expect are going to become a visitor on a daily basis?
And...
Could I, was this my...
Is that, is that an architectural question?
Yeah, I was going to say, Mr. Handel, if, if questions are asked that are outside the scope of your testimony, or outside the scope of your knowledge, please just indicate so, and...
I don't know.
Well, when you design, don't you have to design for capacity?
We have, we have explored a number of different capacities. The ultimate capacity will be designed according to various scenarios and market conditions. I don't know what the ultimate capacity will be.
Which ones have you designed for?
We have 17 individual cabanas and a number of other, a number of other deck chairs, divots, and other, and other things, all of which are subject to change.
Okay, I understand that. But in terms of capacity, what does that mean? So if you have to...
I can give you no further knowledge of, no further information.
Did you ever have?
Nope.
So, so you never had a number of anticipated users in mind, or that was given to you when you did your design? I want to make sure.
Just so I'm clear, when you're saying capacity, are you saying physically how many people per fire code can fit in the building, or are you saying how many people are anticipated to be in the building? Because those are two separate things.
And they're good questions, so let's do both.
They're two separate things.
I agree.
I want to be clear in what you mean by capacity.
No, I appreciate it, I appreciate it. Look, why don't you tell me, based on your design, what would you anticipate, knowing the fire code, what would be the, the fire code limit?
So I think there is a, by fire code, there would be maximum capacity of approximately 400.
400 people, that's, that's the fire code.
Fire code.
Okay, alright. Can I, may I, Madam Chairman, may I make a statement, please, if I could? If, if people in the back could not be that, because the mics have to pick this up so we could have a transcript, and it's really important that we have a transcript, not only for all of you who are on my side, but for the applicant. So let's all be fair, if we could. Thank you. Now, in terms of the...
Can we just use the microphones up there?
Thank you, I'm trying. Can you hear me? Alright. Now...
Can it's 400?
It's 400. Now, when you designed this, what did you design in terms of the anticipated usage weekday and weekend?
Again, as I mentioned, there are various scenarios. The capacity for fire code is the 400 people.
Okay, I want to get into the scenarios. Is it your testimony under oath that you can't tell me?
I don't, I don't recall.
Are you, so just, just so I'm clear, you're asking the architect?
Yes.
How the business operations are going to run on a daily basis? And he's indicated he can't recall, and he doesn't know what the business operation...
So that the physical capacity is determined by the fire code, and that is the 400?
Okay, okay, so that's what you designed for, for the fire code? You based it on the fire code?
Correct.
Okay. So then, based on the fire code numbers, how many cars would you expect would be generated on a weekday? Because in other words, you must know how many cars would be normally anticipated based on published data. I guess it's...
Mr. Handel, just before you answer, we have not qualified Mr. Handel in traffic. We have qualified him in architecture.
It's not a traffic question. It has nothing to do with movement of traffic on external roads. My question is, in terms of this facility, there's, it's going to attract so many cars, a certain number of cars. Those cars are going to have to go someplace. My question is, how many cars, and we're going to do it in stages, but first of all, how many cars will this project generate?
I have to object to that. We have not qualified Mr. Handel in order to speak to traffic generation and parking generation. That is not within his expertise.
Who of we witnesses will know how many cars are going to be generated? Because I want to make sure I get this right first.
Mr. Lieberman, under the redevelopment plan, parking is not required. It is not required.
Okay. So you're telling me then, is it fair to say that in the course of your assignment for this project, you never looked into how many cars are going to be attracted to the site weekdays and weekends?
There is no requirement for parking under the redevelopment code.
I understand that. That's not what I asked you. So the question was, did you look into it, and do you have any answer?
I did not personally look into that.
Okay. Who did look into it, and what we told?
I do not, I do not know, I was not told anything.
Okay.
Because there is no parking required.
Okay, so then, there's no onsite parking, and you're telling us that that's not required, but there's nothing that would preclude you under the redevelopment plan from having parking, is there?
Not that I know of.
Okay.
Call the phone, please.
Not that I know of.
Okay. And where, without knowing how many cars are going to be generating, you told me you didn't, where are the cars going to go?
Again, the city ordinance requires no, no parking. There was, as far as I know, there, we have never analyzed that.
You haven't analyzed. Now, on a summer day here in Asbury Park, generally, do you know how many vacant spaces? Have you made any inquiry in terms of the vacant spaces that are available on Ocean Avenue and the surrounding area of this project?
And again, I have to object, we have not qualified Mr. Handel as a parking expert or to engage in a parking analysis.
That's right.
He's well outside the scope of his testimony and expertise.
Right, it is not within the scope of his testimony.
Well, okay, that's fine, and we'll move on, but I hope my point's made, because I wonder where those cars are going to go. And, and there's nothing that stops them from putting it in a parking lot. The, my next question is lighting, the, the...
We have, I'm sorry, we have not discussed lighting yet.
That's correct.
Okay, someone else could do it?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chairman, Madam Chairperson. And in terms of the sound system, you said there's going to be a sound system and it's going to comply, right? Is that what you said? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, going to comply with what? Asbury Park ordinance or the state ordinance? What are you going to comply with?
State ordinance.
Okay, does Asbury Park have a noise ordinance?
Asbury Park does not have a noise ordinance that has been approved by the NJDEP.
Will you, will you pledge to meet the Asbury Park noise ordinance despite the fact that the DEP hasn't approved it?
You're asking whether we'll comply with a law that doesn't qualify under the NJDEP's rulings. All I could say is that the applicant will comply with all laws that are applicable.
Okay. In light of the fact that you're going to have a sound system, are you going to have any hours of operation, are there hours of operation that are, that the, that the ordinance that the municipality has with regard to operations of businesses?
No.
Okay, okay. Some do, some don't. Okay, do you know whether or not Asbury Park has mandatory hours for, for, for commercial businesses as part of their ordinance?
I believe you're asking for a legal question.
It's a yes or no question, do you know?
I do not.
Okay. And I take it that that's irrelevant, so if you're an architect?
That is not, not my scope of response.
That's fine, that's fine, that's fine. Now, can we go back to that green thing, that picture?
Do you have a, do you have a specific exhibit?
No, it's the wall. It's that big green with the vegetation that you showed, whatever one that was.
You let me know when you get to the exhibit you'd like to reference.
You got it, but it's, but everybody's going to know.
There's this one?
No. 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 That's it. That's the one.
Okay, this one, just so for clarity, for the record, I want to just double check which one, this one has been marked. I believe it's A12.
Yeah, that's A12. Now, my, my question for you on this is, this is where we, I think, if I got this right, because I really am not familiar with this, but this is where we talked about the void to solid and solid to void issue, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Now, my understanding is, is that that's considered to be virtually 100% void except for the opening in the middle? Is that accurate?
No.
What is that? I mean, I don't see, I personally don't see anything but density, but where is the space?
As, as mentioned, we don't think those provisions apply, because they apply to windows and storefronts of which we have none.
Okay. Is there anything in the municipal ordinance that supports your position?
We, just for clarity, we do have a planner that will come up at the end that will be going through the requested relief and justification for it.
Okay. But it's your view as an architect that this is, what would that have looked like had it complied with the municipal requirements? Like, how, how would it be different?
It wouldn't, because it doesn't, in our opinion, it doesn't require those, those openings, because it's, there are no windows and there are no storefronts. Mr. Keenan will testify to that later.
Okay, there are no windows, but there are shutters, right? Is that right?
Correct.
And, and the shutters are designed that when they open, they let in air? Is that correct?
Correct.
And, and do they let in light when they open too?
They do.
And, and does that sound awful, like something else we call window?
Windows are a defined term, and they have, and they are defined as having glazing, framing, which shutters are also a defined term, and they do not.
Okay. And so, let's say that those were windows instead of, just hypothetically, you're an expert, I'm allowed to ask you that question. What would that look like, that wall?
It, it wouldn't, because we don't require windows, and, and so it would, it would be a different project.
And so, is it just a matter of personal taste as to whether that looks nicer than what the ordinance would require? Is that what this is?
I don't believe it's a matter of taste, I believe it's a matter of compliance with regulations, which we'll hear more from Mr. Keenan at the end of the...
Okay, 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 thank you. Now, in terms of articulation, you indicated that six inches was right. That's what you have, about six inches?
Correct.
What's the standard?
If there is no standard, it says inches are sufficient, I believe is the wording of the statute.
Okay. Did you, did you, what would the effect have been had you extended the articulation beyond six inches? Are there, are there any prototypes that you did, or renderings that you did that depict what that would look like?
We studied different types of cladding, and this was deemed to be the most successful.
But what is, from an architectural standpoint, what made that most successful? I just want to understand that.
It really was our aesthetic judgment.
It's just a matter of taste?
Yes.
Okay. Um... Ah. Now, are you, were you responsible, where does this fall in? In other words, you're aware of what happened when Sandy occurred, right? In terms of the damage with sand piling up on one and a half blocks west of Ocean Avenue? You know that, right?
Right, just to be clear, are you asking about a specific property that was impacted or general knowledge about Hurricane Sandy?
Yeah, I mean, it was general knowledge, that a block and a half west of Ocean Avenue, we had sand in Asbury. In fact, there's a study from Stockton, I think, that supports that. But are you aware of that?
Yes.
Okay. Did you, architecturally, were you designed, were you charged with a building, excuse me, planning, designing this in a manner that it would be sandy or equivalent resilient?
Yes, there are numerous restrictions in the current code that need to comply with. We believe this complies with all of those regulations.
Is there going to be scouring underneath the buildings during a 100-year storm?
So we do have Mr. Delaney, who will be coming up to speak more as to the stormwater regulations specifically.
Not storm...
I'm sorry, as to the flood hazard regulations specifically.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, thank you very much for your courtesy. Thank you for your courtesy.
Okay, does the public have any further questions of the witness that would like to get up to the microphone? Feel free to stand up and line up. And please let us know, before you speak, we will need to know, is this where we need to know names? Okay, so if you, when you come up, could you please, your name, your address, and whether or not you're part of SAW?
My name is Teresa Jones. I currently live in Neptune. I'm a former business owner, ABC Liquor License and Employee of the City of Asbury Park. I'm not affiliated with any group or organization here.
Okay.
In reference to the number of shifts, you said there's 75 employees, which you referred to as help. We find that offensive, this is 2019. There was a question that was posed, whether there was ABC license requirements. And I find it hard to believe, like was being sold the Brooklyn Bridge here, that you're planning a full-scale restaurant with 75 employees, but you have no plan or knowledge of ABC license requirements. Has anybody thought about that? Because when you're doing your square footage, I'm a nurse by profession, but I also know that you can pull up charts to measure capacity for occupancy, for space. So I find it hard to believe that you architectural engineering geniuses did not calculate that. 400 is quite a bit. And if you're talking about 400, we can average that you would need a parking capacity for approximately 200 cars, 250, on a good 90-degree day in the summer. So I wonder, has anybody, is anybody here familiar with those charts?
This would be to the, to the architect? Is the architect aware of those charts?
Yeah, they're charts to calculate occupancy.
Are you aware of how fire code occupancy is calculated?
Yes, we are.
Okay, so then you should then be able to tell us the number of anticipated participants or per people that would be at this club on any given day. That was what I wanted to clarify. The other point, this architectural design here, this picture, is reminiscent of Fort Mifflin, a military revolutionary war, Civil War fort on the Delaware River of Philadelphia, and that's not appropriate. The whole design is a military thing, and I'm against this project because it's also reminiscent of the 1950 segregation of Asbury Park.
This has to be questions, Ms. Jones. No, this is limited to questions. Comments will come later. You're welcome to comment at the end. Questions to the architect, please. Name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Joseph Copley, 315th Ave. of Asbury Park. I'm also the Legislative Director for the Surf Rider Foundation. Just have a quick question about the access to the boardwalk. Now, there is no direct access to the beach, that's correct.
That is, that is correct. The access will be on the two sides on 6th and 7th Street.
And, and any of the patrons will still have to get a beach badge to, to go to the municipal beach?
Yes.
Okay. And there's no future plans to try to add a direct access to the beach?
Not that I know of.
Alright, that's all we have.
My name is Jack Brayden, B-R-E-D-I-N, 94 and a half Heck Avenue, Ocean Grove. When a professional in the state of New Jersey prepares a plan, like the Pavilion Building that you prepared a plan for, do you review all the rules and regulations from the different agencies that would have jurisdiction over this plan in preparation for preparing it?
Yeah, so we, we work with a large group of professionals to try to coordinate all of that information and make sure that it is in compliance with all, all statute.
Now, you're aware that the state has parking regulations that apply to every single site improvement in the state of New Jersey. If you're going to build a single family, there's a certain amount of off-street parking spaces available, and, and so forth. Now, in, in the event, I mean, it's very nice that the City of Asbury Park says, go ahead, you can, you don't need any parking. But first, the City of Asbury Park is required to get a special standard, apply for a special standard from the state, and an individual developer cannot do that. So my question is, does the City of Asbury Park have a special standard to approve a project that has no parking?
Just, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
This is a question, I'm not trying to short-circuit this, but I think you're referring to the residential site improvements.
No, it's any, any, it's any, any site improvement, not just residential, it's any site, if you want, you mean to tell me, if it's not, if it's a supermarket, you can build an AMP supermarket with no parking? Come on, you know, get real here. You, there are state standards for every use there is, and first, the town, the city has to apply for a special standard. If you don't have it, you, the board cannot approve it.
Okay, this...
There are no state standards for non-residential development, and a special area exception is what you would do in order to modify residential, residential site improvements on that standard on a local, specific district, if I may say.
I disagree, I disagree. There are standards for every type of parking that there is, for any use that there is, there's parking requirements, off-street parking requirements. It's a fact. It's a fact. Now, in addition to that, the lot that this building is on, is it on the Rossi list?
That's actually a legal question, and I.
Actually, also, the Rossi really is not within the purview of the planning board, so that is not something that we.
Well, I would disagree with you, Madam Chairman, because the Rossi list is signed by the chairman of the planning board and the mayor, who is a member of the planning board. So I'm telling you, you're giving wrong information to this group of people here. And I'll have the architect answer that, if you would.
Just so we're clear, the architect is, I don't believe, aware of the Rossi.
I cannot opine on this.
Right.
What was the answer?
I cannot opine on this.
You can't find the list?
It's, it's a legal question. I have no.
It's a legal question, not an architect's question.
Okay. Well, apparently, you didn't review all the documents necessary to prepare this plan. Thank you.
And just, I believe at the outset, we indicated that each person who asked a question would indicate whether they were or were not part of SAW that's represented by council.
Okay. Next, your name and address, and whether or not you're part of the SAW group.
Dave Ziegler. I live on 1323 4th Ave. I've lived in Asbury Park for nine years. I know of this group. I support them. I like them on Facebook, but I'm an individual on Asbury Park. That's okay. So my first question is, what is the height of the deck, the pool deck, in relationship to the boardwalk? Is this where the ramps, that aren't ramps, that go down to the boardwalk?
No, the elevation of the pool deck is roughly at the elevation of the boardwalk.
Okay. Where are the ramps at? That's where I'm confused.
So the ocean, Ocean Avenue is approximately 2 and 1/2 feet lower than the boardwalk, and the site slopes up from Ocean Avenue to the boardwalk. In order to provide handicapped access for the project from Ocean Avenue, there's a sloping walkway that goes along Ocean Avenue through the landscape to come up to the porch, which is at the elevation of the boardwalk.
So a sloping walkway is not a ramp?
A slope, a sloping walking is not, a sloping walkway is not defined as a ramp.
Okay. Thank you. The other question I have is, so the second floor height, we have the Great Wall of China here, and then we have the second floor, the second floor height with this fence thing going on, what's the height of that?
So the, the height of the, of the roof deck is, it's at 14 foot 6 inches above the boardwalk elevation, which would be approximately 16 feet above the elevation of Ocean Avenue.
So I have the height of the wall at 33 feet. Is that with the second floor? That's not a second floor?
No, the 33 feet is, that was mentioned before, is the absolute height of the bulkhead area, which is mostly driven by the need to have the handicapped elevator coming from the ocean.
What's the height of the wall with the second floor elevation?
If I may, I'm going to point to one of the exhibits here. That way, we're making sure we're talking about the same. So on this exhibit, which I think was A11 or 10, Mr. Handel, right here, you see where the hand is going across?
Yeah.
Is this what you're referring to as the bulkhead?
Yes, that is the bulkhead.
And what is the height at the top of the bulkhead?
In relationship to the parking lot.
In the relationship to Ocean Avenue?
Correct.
Okay. A12? This is exhibit A12. Thank you.
So that's 30 foot 6 inches above the boardwalk.
Parking lot, sir.
So the, that would be another 2 foot, approximately 2 foot 6 inches. So 33, that would be the 33 feet.
So what is the height of the wall without the second floor paneling?
So just on A12, your question now is referring to the top, right here, where the hand is going along at the top of the green wall?
Correct, where the ID goes to.
Okay.
So that's a, I think that's an approximately 6-foot wall.
And from Ocean Avenue?
No, 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 above, above the deck.
No.
So the total height from Ocean Avenue?
No, I'm sorry. So that's approximately 20 feet, 20 feet from the sidewalk.
My last question, sir, is these openings that have shutters around them that aren't windows, they close at night? Is that what I understand?
Correct.
Okay. Do we know what time that, that is?
I think they're, they will be, no, we do not. So that, you know, they will, they will be operated by whoever is in the cabana. So, so that, they're, the individual who's in the cabana can open or close them while they're inside the cabana.
When these shutters do open up and expose the hole that looks a lot like a window, what do they look at? Is it the beach? What is the view? I mean, you said it was a nice visual. What is that visual?
No, no, no. So the, so the shutters, the shutters open up onto Ocean Avenue, and they're basically, they're behind the green screen. They're predominantly for light, for light and ventilation.
Okay. Sorry. Thank you.
And I just want to say, I do, I feel like this is awkward, that we have our back to you, but it's for the remote, for the microphone, so we do apologize for that. We kind of have a choice of looking at people or being heard.
Okay. Hello, Warner Baumgartner, 5th Ave. I do not belong to SAW. I am the city historian and am here as an advocate for the city of Asbury Park. As an architect, you design to specific site requirements, or do you design to an environment surrounding the site? Or in other words, do you take into account the surroundings when you design a building, or is it just site-specific?
I believe we try to do both.
You try to do both? In this particular case, what was your primary design paradigm? To have an individual standalone structure, or to have it relate to its surroundings?
The idea was actually to design something that was simple and quiet and would provide a backdrop to Ocean Avenue with the punctuation of the large opening, which would create the architectural distinction that we thought it needed.
So your intent is to have this building be innocuous, kind of recede into the background, or is that my understanding?
No, I don't, I don't think, I don't think it gets designed to be, no.
You want it to be flamboyant and very noticeable?
No.
No? Okay. How would you describe this in terms of its presentation to the landscape?
Our, our, our goal was really to design something that would be simple and elegant and appropriate to the beachfront vernacular. That was our intent.
Okay. Regarding this particular rendering that's on the screen here, that wall in the front, that's a single layer of wood structure, or is it a double layer of wood structure?
It has, it has several layers. So it has the layer of the back, the back, the backboard, it has the projected batten, and then it has the green screen cabling, which, if we ever get to it, our colleagues from Melo and Bauer will outline.
Okay. So, so the two layers are in contact with each other, right?
I'm not understanding the question.
They're attached to each other.
The two, the two pieces of wood are attached to each other. That is correct.
Okay. As an architect, I imagine you're familiar with the characteristics of various building materials and things?
Generally.
Generally, okay. Regarding this green screen, do you have any experience in horticulture or landscape design?
We are working with one of the foremost landscape architects that we've worked with, and they'll come and testify to that. We have general familiarity with those, with that field.
Okay. What, what actually is this plant, this green plant?
That will be, that will come up in further testimony.
And just for clarity, we do have Mr. Bauer scheduled to testify third.
Okay. Have you made any accommodation to prevent insects from traversing from the outer structure that holds this greenery to the interior of the building?
The, the idea really, the, the cabanas are not conditioned space, the, you know, so the answer is no.
Okay. So insects could travel freely through from the exterior to the interior?
When the shutters are open.
Well, I think you had testified that this is an open structure. The entire thing is.
No, that's not correct.
No? Okay. Clarify that for me. The, the inner wall is solid all the way through?
The, the, the wall on Ocean Avenue has the shutters in it. When the shutters are closed, the, your insects would not be able to go inside.
My insects.
When the shutters, when the shutters are open, they would be allowed to.
Okay. But the shutters are not airtight, right? There's still gaskets or interlocking seals or anything like that. They're just wooden shutters that close and then open.
That is correct.
Okay. All right. Okay. So you don't think insects would go through little small things like ants?
I think, I think some may find their way through.
Okay. Great. Okay. Regarding articulation that was discussed extensively, looking at that picture there, on the extreme right-hand side, where the individual is walking up the sidewalk, I see two different building materials. I see what appears to be brick and stucco. Is that correct?
There is no brick.
What is, what is that patterned area?
It's, it's just showing some of the green screen of the cabling, where the plants have not yet grown. So it's really showing the growing in of.
Oh, I see. I see. That's, that's an ungrown into area.
Correct.
Okay. Would you describe that interface between the stucco and that screen as an articulation?
Yes.
Okay. And why is that? Why is that an articulation?
It's articulated both in material and in plan, so I think it would comply with all definitions of articulation.
Okay. In material and in plan, that is, there's a change in depth, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Yet you describe the front of the building as being articulated, I believe.
We believe that is articulated as well.
Okay. Where, where is the change in material and in depth?
It is not required, basically, in the statute, basically, you could say articulation can be a matter of inches, which is what we have relied on for our definition in this case.
Okay. And on the boardwalk side, I think I have a similar concern. On the boardwalk side, if you bring that picture up, if you would, that is a wooden fence, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Would it be commonly described as like a board-on-board, where the boards alternate in depth in and out, one side to the other?
Yeah, it has, you can go to the plan of it. You can see it has a flatboard and a projecting, and a projecting board.
Oh, I see. So it would be more described as like a stockade with ribs, or a solid fence with ribs?
Or a board and, a board and batten with the batten projected up to become a picket.
Okay. But it is, in fact, solid, right?
It is solid up to a point, as mentioned in testimony, solid to 6 and 1/2 feet, projecting picket for an additional foot.
Oh, I see. At the very top there?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, that's clarified. Thank you very much. What is going to prevent the wind from toppling this over in a high wind, a nor'easter, or a hurricane?
It's been engineered to withstand those winds. We will follow the recommendations of board and actually check, the board and actually check to make sure we comply with all statute.
Okay. Thank you. Do you consider this facade, if you go back to that last thing with the, the boardwalk view of the fence? The boardwalk view, yeah, there. Do you consider that facade to be articulated?
We do.
Where is the change in material and the change in depth?
We, we're not relying on that in this case. We're relying on the change in plane between the two boards, as well as the change in, of having the pickets come and emerge from the solid portion.
Okay.
And relying on the definition of.
All right. All right. Could you go to the site plan, please? The, the initial slide that you had there.
Is this the one you're referring to?
I believe so. That was your first slide. Yes, site plan. Could you describe where the property boundaries are on that? I can't really see that well.
We actually, sorry to preempt you. Our engineer does have a plan that shows the property, the property boundaries that he will be presenting.
Ah, okay. All right. So the building envelope, could you describe where the building envelope is?
So just trying to coordinate. I will trace it. You tell me if I am accurate.
Sure.
Okay. So the, the building envelope, starting in this corner, this is the front facade, right?
Uh huh.
Keep going. So I'm going along the front facade. Am I still correct?
Keep going.
Okay. Then we turn the corner down here. Is that correct? And it bumps out there. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And it follows along the pedestrian access here. Is that correct?
Okay, one, one second. Just stop right there. That bump out, that's the transition between the green vegetation and the stucco, correct?
Correct. Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Continue.
Okay. So going along this side, am I still on the building envelope going down here?
Correct.
Okay. And this, at this point, is this the fence line?
Yeah, just keep, keep going around.
And this is the fence.
Okay. Now, if we could just stop right there for a moment. That building envelope line there, is that on the property line?
There's an, we'll, we'll go through that with the, the engineer.
The engineer? Okay. Okay. Do you happen to know how this relates to the building directly to the south, adjacent to the site, in terms of how they line up?
Are you talking about the two on the other side of the path, the pedestrian accessways?
Go to the.
The, the next pavilion to the south, which is currently unused.
You're looking at exhibit A3?
Sunset Pavilion. I'm curious as to how the facade on the ocean side of this new design winds up with the facade of the existing Sunset Pavilion.
I believe what you're asking pertains to setbacks, and our site engineer can answer that question more readily.
Okay. Thank you very much. Same question regarding the block to the west, which is developed as a multifamily residential. Do you have any exhibits that show the relationship of the building lines of this new development to the existing building lines across Ocean Avenue?
Again, any setbacks will be discussed by the site engineer.
Okay. So as an architect, you were not given any direction as to how to design this to fit into the environment regarding setbacks or conformity with existing building lines?
We believe this complies with all regulations.
Okay. All right. Was, was there any thought from an architectural point of view to make something that has more human interaction on the boardwalk side? You have what appears to be in your exhibit, a food and beverage area inside the building. In your architectural design, did you consider opening that up to the public on the boardwalk side?
The, there's no access permitted from the project directly to the, to the boardwalk, as far as we understand, and basically.
Well, I didn't ask about access. I thought, I'm thinking more about service, like service to people on the boardwalk from that interior space. Any consideration to that from an architectural point of view?
Are you asking whether it was planned as a restaurant or retail use?
No, no, I'm asking from an architectural perspective. You have a.
I don't, but I don't think that would, that use would not be permitted under what we're trying to do here, as far as I understand.
Would not be permitted. Could you elaborate on that? Would not be permitted to have a, a service counter for hot dogs and drinks?
I think where we're getting at is that, as a legal determination, we are proposing a particular use. This particular use is what is permitted on this lot and identified to be on this lot in the waterfront redevelopment plan, and it's the same use that was approved for this lot under the CAFER permit.
Okay. All right. I was kind of interested in the architectural point of having some more human interaction with the building. Well, thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Steve Davis, 1501 Ocean Avenue. I have a question on A9, if you can bring that up. That was the boardwalk view of the club, which showed the multifamily residence on the western side.
Are you a member of SAW?
Not that I know of.
Okay. Thank you.
That's it.
And, and this is the one that I think is actually A12, under the, that's been marked as A12 in the record. Is this the one that you wanted me to pull up?
Yes, thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm creating.
My question is whether that is just a conceptual rendition, or specifically whether or not the westerly wall of the proposed structure is accurately depicted with respect to its elevation relating to the multifamily residential building.
If we, if we go back and if we actually look at the east elevation, so that, that, that picture is in perspective, so depending on where you stand, so this, this view gives a, a more accurate elevational perspective of the, of the height relationship between the proposed pavilion and the north beach condominiums.
And this is, this is exhibit A9.
That, that may be more accurate, but it gives no understanding whatsoever as to how the height of the building relates to the level of the units in the building. Is it possible that if you take a look at, did you say it's A12? It was marked A9 in the right-hand corner, the first exhibit you had up, whether or not the picture actually depicts the height of the wall with respect to the actual dwelling units that sit to the west of the structure? Have I said that clearly?
I believe, I believe the perspective is, is accurate from the point of view that it is taken, and I believe that, that the east elevation is also 100% accurate in terms of, of, of its relationship to the northeast condominiums.
Can we go back to A9 just for a moment, please? I'm calling it A9. I'm not saying that's the official exhibit designation.
So this is, just to clarify, I mistakenly called it A12 before it's A13.
So that the view of the various units that may face the ocean in that building are accurately placed here as best in terms of their, in terms of what may be blocked and what might, what might not be blocked. That's my only, that's my concern.
I believe the elevation is a more accurate rendition of that.
So that, when you say the elevation, you mean the one that is A?
A6.
Which is marked as A9. So this one, this is a perspective of what you would see if you were standing on the boardwalk. Is that correct? So, this is not a perspective of what you would see if you were standing in a unit looking out over the ocean. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
I understand which way we're looking.
Okay. I just, I, so more for the, the record when someone goes to read it later.
And just one point of clarification. When the height of the westerly wall of the structure was originally being described, and I know you recently just said in response to another gentleman that it was 20 feet on the westerly side, does that include 15 feet of wall and four feet of what you mentioned was a parapet, or four or five feet? Is that, just one of the actual total height, and if there are different elements?
Sure. So, just going back to A11. Okay, A11. So, we're on, A12. I will get, I'll get this right. A12. So, Mr. Handel, where I'm tracing here, is this the height of the front wall plus the railing?
The, you know, the Ocean Avenue isn't exactly flat. It's pretty dead flat. So, we are saying that the top of this wall is 20 feet from the sidewalk level along Ocean Avenue, including all, all walls and to, that's to the top of the coping.
Okay, so, just so we're clear, this is, and I'm going to trace up, up the wall here. This is the front wall, and then right around here, I think it transitions to a railing on the roof deck. Is that accurate?
That is correct.
Okay. And that, the front wall plus the railing?
Is 20 feet from ocean, from the elevation of Ocean Avenue. The landscape itself terraces up several feet. So, that, at measure that our building, it's less. But from the Ocean Avenue elevation, it's approximately 20 feet to the top of that wall.
Okay.
And am I correct to assume that the easterlymost wall of that structure is somewhat lower? That, at its highest point, or whatever's on it, is lower than the 20 feet, I think you indicated. Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Felicia Simmons, Sewell Avenue, Asbury Park. I am the president and speak on behalf of Monmouth County National Action Network. I am a member of SAW, because I won't deny it. I'm also a member of Asbury Park Affordable Housing, Monmouth County Affordable Housing 18, also numerous, 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 numerous other organizations. And also, I am Spartacus, just to be part of everything. My question is, on behalf of National Action Network and my friends on the west side, I'm trying to word it properly, as I, you know, I know my, I have to ask you as an architect. In this design, is it made so, and I'm trying not to repeat what someone else said, but the fort, the cage, stood up, it's built more like a cage. And in, also in the buildup, I want to see the enclosed space. You didn't show that in any of the renderance, unless I missed it, because I was a few minutes late, because being part of many groups, I'm a very busy person. What does the enclosed space look like? Since there is a roof deck, that means there has to be enclosed space inside, right? What is the renderance of that? What is the floor when the pool?
So, I've, I've gone back to an exhibit that's A4 or A5?
A3.
A4. A4, okay. Mr. Handel, just in, in answering this question, I think if you look at this particular exhibit, it might be helpful.
So, this is, so the red area is, is the enclosed area. The blue area is the area that is open on the ground level. And then there's a roof deck, which we mentioned, and then there's a very small enclosed area on that level, which is the 486 area, square feet, which is required for the elevator access and for the mechanical.
Okay, so on this floor, the, the red spacing, how wide is that?
The, yeah.
I can't see, so I'm sorry. This is very, I wish to do is, you know, 3D, but, you know, the depth of, you know, I can't visualize it. So, what is the exact distance between those, the red and the, the red spacing, the walling?
Yeah, so the cabanas are approximately 12 feet deep.
And on the second floor enclosure, right, it covers the whole bottom floor?
It covers those cabanas, yes.
It covers those cabanas. How deep does that go in?
It's the same 12 feet.
So, it's like a donut, completely enclosed?
No.
I mean, this outside and then the inside is completely covered?
The cabanas are, the cabanas are covered, yes.
So, upstairs, so the cabanas are covered, and you said it go in 12 feet?
Correct.
On the second floor, it's also the exact mirror. There's no depth of enclosure. It goes in exactly 12 feet also?
Correct.
So, you're saying, so, is there any, I'm trying to say, the closure of the floors, the pool decks, and there's no closure of the top level? What exactly is it being designed for? Because you said that the furniture can be moved or displaced, or not, you know, it's not concrete. So, what other purposes can it be used for?
The goal is really for chaises, daybeds, and chairs. If you look, you know, if you look at, so this would be the, again, the, how we imagine the ground floor would be utilized. And if we go to the other rendering, looking down, you can see right in the foreground, go back to, yeah.
Yeah.
So, you can see this, this, those chaises that are at the bottom of the screen would be...
That's on the first floor, correct?
Those would be on, those would be on the first floor, but they would be then replicated on the, you know, on the...
The second floor.
On the roof deck.
So, see, you see where the poolside deck is, correct? And you see the, the chairs that are the spacing from the pool to the chair deck. And then you see that wall behind it?
Yes.
Correct? What is in between there, between the speed? How, what's the distance, the depth of that space back there? No, behind the chairs.
Behind the chairs?
Right there. And that wall right there.
These...
Because obviously, the deck will be on top, right? The, the roof deck will be on top. So, in between there.
So, are, are you asking, these are the entrances to the cabanas? Is that what you're asking?
Yes. How deep are the cabanas?
The cabanas, the cabanas are the 12 feet.
So, it's each piece is a 12-feet cabana, and on top of it is mirrored. So, there will be no open, how, the depth between the wall and the pool, how far is that?
I believe it's approximately 16 feet.
Right, 16 feet. So, if you covered the pool, how far would that be across from the, from the cabana wall? And are the cabana walls removable or not removable?
So, just, sorry, one, one question at a time.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, I, I want to just re-ask them, so he answers each question independently. The cabana walls are permanent walls, right? They're not removable walls.
There are doors that open.
Open.
Right.
And there's no proposal right now to cover the pool with a, a second level. Is that correct?
Absolutely not.
No, I mean, to cover it, like, you know, some pools and ice rinks have floors that come out over top of the ice rink. So, it could turn to a skating rink. It can turn to different things, you know, put it, that, put a covering over the pool. It could be a dance floor, or something in that manner. Is that composed in the design, or is it just always going to be open and never a floor covering of any type, just a tarp?
There is, there, as far as, I have never discussed any other covering.
So, it's always going to be a tarp, as of now? It is designed for a complete tarp?
As far as I know.
You know, non-stable tarp. It's just a, just, you know, you can't stand on it. It's just the paper. Just, you know, the plastic covering, the cloth. Huh? No dance floor, no, no, no hard thing you can stand on. Just, you know, just a plastic tarp for a pool. You know, you put the pool covering on it?
As far, as far as I know, yes.
Okay. And from the wall of the cabanas to the wall, the end of the other chairs on the other side, including the pool, how big would that be? The, the distance, the dimpse of the feet from the wall to the end of the other pool decks, the other lawn chairs on the other side?
So, the, the entire structure is 71 feet in depth. It includes the cabanas that we've talked about at 12 feet. The deck area in front of the cabanas at around 16 feet. The pool is 21 feet wide. There's a deck of approximately the same size on the other side of the pool. And then there's an area that's indicated in the lighter blue, which is approximately 20 feet, which is sand.
Okay. And the, the kitchen enclosed, I mean, the kitchen, it's enclosed, correct?
That is correct.
And the floor, the, the, the eating area, where is that located? Again, on the north side? How wide is that? And are there tables going to be in there?
Yes, there will be tables.
So, just to clarify, sorry, just to clarify the tables, this, the area inside the structure here, is that intended? Sorry. There we go. The area here, that area, is that intended for where people would sit and eat?
No, that's a kitchen.
Okay. And then the area that's enclosed here, what is that?
Those are bathrooms and lockers and showers. Those are...
So, if someone wanted to have something to eat, would they be eating it inside or outside?
They would be outside on the deck.
So, there's no enclosed eating area inside of the facility?
Correct.
So, and this area here, is this just an open-air canopy?
No, that is actually enclosed, if you go to this, if you go to the roof coverage diagram. So, that, so that, so that, that area, but, is a place where you could sit undercover, but it's not enclosed.
Is it this?
It's the area that you see there in the rendering.
Okay.
Okay, so how many can that area sit, seat?
Probably 25 in that immediate area, 25 to 40 maximum.
Okay. And just a top of mind, so the enclosure on the top for roof deck, the, the opening, is there any plans for that to be enclosed?
So, go back, go to the...
To close that area?
The answer is no. So, there is a, there's the, there's a shade structure on there, which is indicated in those light lines there, which would just be a translucent area where you could go for sun protection. And so, that will be, you know, open to the air and supported on, on poles. The only enclosed area on the second floor is that, go back to the plan, please. It's that 484 square foot area in the, which is the enclosure for the handicap lift up to there and the mechanical space.
Okay, you brought up something about a shade area and, you know, things erected. And these erected poles or whatever the cause of shade, how far do they come out, and exactly what are they made of? And do they protect you from the rain and the elements, or just shade?
They're mostly, they, they'll be permeable, so they probably won't protect, they won't, will not protect you in, as currently as you're saying, only from the sun.
As, as current, but if you change the materials, would it be able to protect you from the elements?
If we change them, it would.
The materials?
We have, but we don't have a plan to change them.
No, I, I didn't ask if there was a plan. I just asked this, if you could, because you're an architect and into design.
Yes, you could, you could design a waterproof canvas structure that would protect you. That's not our current intent.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Tracy Rogers. Yes, I'm a member of SAW. So, let's get that up. Tracy Rogers, Sewell Avenue. Couple of questions. You said you haven't gone to DEP yet to finalize the, the plans?
No.
Okay. Would DEP, with your es, I mean, your experience, would they have a problem with the use of anything that you may come up with? Would they probably may ask for something different, or you just believe these standards are exactly what they are?
Yes, we believe we're in full compliance with DEP standards.
During the land use, it says that 25%, if you use, if you, if you cover, create 25% of an acre, it makes the development a major development. So, is this considered a major development on a half acre of land?
Are you referring to stormwater requirements?
Yes.
Then Mr. Delaney will be coming up to speak more specifically about stormwater requirements.
Well, I'm, I'm also going to ask him, because isn't there a relationship to architectural, dealing with stormwater? So, is it a major development?
We, we allow our professionals to determine the stormwater requirement, so we rely on Mr. Delaney, who will come up in further testament, in further testimony.
I mean, I, I understand he's gonna, but in order for you to create something, you have to know what those requirements are, don't you?
Just, just to be clear, so, Mr. Handel is an architect. We've qualified him in the field of architecture. We will have testimony about stormwater by our licensed professional engineer, who can answer questions.
No, no, but...
I, I don't think Mr. Handel can answer your, your question. I think that's...
So, they, if they're telling you to build a building, you have to know what standards to meet. So, as an architect, what standards do they give you versus stormwater that relates to architecture?
So, Mr. Handel, as far as you are aware, did you design this building in accordance, sorry, have your plans been reviewed by a licensed professional engineer?
They have.
And are you aware of any information that would indicate that the plans are not in conformance with the requirements that the licensed site engineer?
No.
Relates to?
But did they give you anything? Did they tell you?
They will speak.
It's, I just, the, the design, just so we're clear, the design's a collaborative effort. We have more than one, more than one person who reviews.
Yeah, but I think if you're doing one thing, you have to know, you know, if you're putting together a car, you want to know the length of where you want to put the light. So, if you're going to put the light in, you got to know the size of the light, right?
And, and this...
So, these, these collectively have to go, so you have to be told what they are.
And Miss...
But we'll, we'll go on. The next question, the foundation, when you were doing the architecture, you, you're going to have to pour some concrete out, right? To design, to surround a pool, to, 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 you know, what the design of the building is, right?
Yes. And so, we worked with a licensed structural engineer, the, you know, so the, the building is, and foundations are fully pile-supported, including the, the concrete structure of the pool, which has substantially more piles to support the weight of that concrete enclosure.
So, you're going to have probably extra concrete because of the pool?
We don't have, we, we have, we have extra piles because of the pool.
Okay. Are you, as a part of the architect, do you have to design the connection of the plumbing and where it's going to meet up and how that is in the building?
No, the mechanical engineer actually does the design of the plumbing and that interface.
So, you don't have any relationship to where he can put it versus what you put?
That, that is all coordinated as part of our professional discussion, but they are, the structural engineer and the mechanical engineer are each required to be licensed professionals and design in their specific area of expertise.
Did someone say something, like to add to that? No one. I, I thought I heard somebody speaking. Okay. Right now, so, when you're looking at the surrounding structure, and you said that, you know, it's breakaway if there's a high storm, I don't want to talk about the devastation out in Ohio and anything else, but with sandy and winds, what type of breakaway resistance are you talking about that these, these walls can stand?
So, the, you know, it's in a wave, the, the, the building is in a wave action zone, if we go back to that section. So, the, the, and again, the, the engineers will be able to speak more about it, but the structure is, is oriented so that it's perpendicular to the, to the beach, so that wave action can actually flow under the building. And then portions of the building that are then below the, the flood elevation, which is the 14 foot 6 inches, which is one foot above that elevation, could actually break, break away for water flow, which we can, you can see just roughly that, that piece that's underneath the deck, you know, you know, can go. And all of the connections between the piling and the structure have been designed in order to meet those wave action requirements.
So, the wave action requirements, and being her particular, back, basically gives a flow that the water will go under and, and not. But, so, I don't understand, and, you know, I'm pretty slow. The level of which you're building the concrete and the amount of water that's coming up, how, how would that, how would that, well, maybe that, I'll leave that question for your engineer, because I think you know where I'm going. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Vance from Asbury Park. You was going back to the design. Who did you design this project for? What's the name of this project? What did you call this project? I mean, like, who did, for the public or for who? I mean, what, what's going to be, what's available for this kind of project? What's, you know, you said you have 50 to 75 employees. What's a qualification of people working at this project when it's finished? What, what position is available for this project?
Right, that's an operational question, or it's a theoretical question. That's not really...
So, you mean, when, once this project is done, you said you have 50 to 75 employees, doing what? I mean, what is available? You have 50 to 75, three shifts. What are they going to be doing with the three shifts? What's available of qualification of being hired at this project?
That's, that's not really, it's not, that's not a planning board question. It's not an architectural question. It's...
I think he's trying to say, who, what jobs are they going to be doing, who is, how they're going to be catering to the people, and who are the people that are going to be catered to?
That's not...
For, for this project?
That's not...
You want to do that with your architect?
That's not...
What's available? What's... If you design a project, what's going to be available for the people to be part of this project of, of availability of, of a position? I mean, what are they going to be doing? Like, what's... doing? Like, what's the-
Sorry? Are, are, are we talking about job creation?
I'm talking about when this project is finished, it's gonna be three shifts, right? Fifty to seventy-five people gonna be working at this place, right? What are they gonna be doing out of the three shifts? What's available?
That's an operational question, and operations are not really part of the planning board. They're not. We're, we're here to discuss the structures, how they're being built. We're not here-
Okay, let's talk about the structure. Is this gonna be a safe project for the people once, for the fire hazards? Is this building gonna be strong for like, for storms and the, the, the material that's gonna be put there for the, of the building? I mean, you know, I mean, far as the, the wood stuff that you're buying, it's gonna be like, secure, I'm asking. That's an architectural question, right?
Yes, and, yes, and, and our goal is really to design a very safe structure that, um, you know, in, in, with the full knowledge of what has happened here in the past. You know, so the answer is yes, and thank you for that question.
Thank you.
Madeline Monaco, I live at Ocean Avenue in Asbury Park. I volunteer in a number of organizations around town. I get paid for none of it. Um, I have a few questions. What is the visual of the height of the wall that's going to be west-facing with the shade structure? I did, I don't recall seeing a visual of what that total picture is going to be. Is it there?
Facing Ocean Avenue or facing-
Facing Ocean Avenue. What's the total height from the sidewalk to the top of that shade structure? And what is it going to look like?
Just for clarifying the record, the shade structure that you're talking about, and I'm gonna, are we talking about the shade structure that's back behind this bulkhead here?
Uh, wherever you're, you said you're gonna put your shade structure.
Okay.
I thought it was going to be on the south-west or southeast side. I don't remember exactly where it was.
So, Mr. Handel, just-
No, I, I under-
And anywhere there's gonna be a shade structure. What, what is the total height-
I understand the question. So the, the shade structure is that area that's, um, outlined in that area there. Um, so it's not-
Where is that facing?
So that's facing the boardwalk.
And it's facing the boardwalk?
So it is, uh, sheltered behind that four hundred and eighty-six-foot pavilion there, so it, and aligned with it, which is why you're not seeing it in the elevation on Ocean Avenue. Um, so the height of that shade structure, um, I believe is ten feet above the roof deck there.
So ten feet above the twenty-foot wall that's facing Ocean Avenue?
No, 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 no. So ten, so the-
Here's a side view.
So depending on where you're measuring, so that, the roof deck is the twelve, is twelve feet off of the boardwalk, the fourteen-six approximately off Ocean Avenue, and then the shade structure is approximately another ten feet above that roof deck there.
I, I don't know. Let me see. Yeah, although I have to just click out of it to do that.
And I think that the rendering may actually be the best, the best indication.
Which one? Okay, that one. Okay, this one right here?
So you, you can see, you can see the, 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 the roof deck.
Sorry, 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 sorry. Here we go.
Yeah, you can see the roof deck elevation, um, which, which is there, and then you can see the pole-supported shade structure there. And it really is meant to be very light with almost a netting-type structure in order to create shade, um, but allow the air to go through. And it's fully, you know, so it, it aligns with the, um, with the bulkhead of, of the elevator and the mechanicals.
So just for clarity, when we're looking at this picture, over to the right-hand side of the picture, this is where Ocean Ave is, correct?
That is correct. Boardwalk is to the left.
And the boardwalk is over here. Okay.
Right. Okay, so it's ten feet above, I, I think I'm correct, then. It's going to be about ten feet above the twenty-foot wall that is going to be on Ocean Avenue.
No. It, you know, so the top of, so the, the, the wall-
Do you have, do you have a picture of it from Ocean Avenue looking at the beach?
You can't see it, you can't see it from Ocean Avenue. So you, so the, the wall in Ocean is twenty feet above Ocean, um, and this would be approximately four feet above that, four and a half feet above, above that.
So if I, if I may, if we're looking at this picture-
Thank you.
Over here to the right, does this represent the top of the wall that you would see from Ocean Avenue, where I'm running my cursor?
Which is twenty feet from the sidewalk, correct? I wanna make, I just wanna make sure I understand.
Twenty feet from the, yes, from the elevation of Ocean Avenue, yes.
And then that this is the bulkhead that extends a little further up, correct?
That's correct.
How much further up?
So that's in a, that's a, that's the thirty-three-foot elevation, so that's, so that is-
Thirty-three feet.
And that's, and that's driven by the requirements for the handicapped elevator and to screen the mechanicals that are necessary. So that's what drives that height. And then the screening to the left is ten feet above the roof and about four and a half feet higher than the wall on Oak, than the, the wall on Ocean Avenue.
Ten feet higher than the wall on Ocean Avenue?
Four and a-
Four and a half feet high. Okay, all right. Thank you. My next question is, did you consider, we've talked a bunch about the, the wall that's going to face Ocean Avenue and the fence that's going to be on the boardwalk side, which is much lower than the wall that's facing Ocean Avenue. Did you consider making that wall that faces Ocean Avenue the same height as the, as the fence that's gonna face the boardwalk, seven feet or whatever that was, and then having a clear structure above that, so that it's a little more open and it doesn't look like a fortress? Did you consider that at all?
So the, the program included the, you know, the cabanas that are in the, in the plan, which were, which needed to be enclosed. The structure for the, again, you know, building in the wave action zone, the floor for that roof deck needs to be relatively robust and, you know, and, and supported. Um, and so the, the answer was no.
I, I would imagine that there are, there are materials that are transparent that would be robust enough so that they aren't, you don't just have to have a solid wall on that upper level. Are there materials that would be robust enough? I've been on a cruise ship that has materials like that.
Yes, you could use aquarium glazing, which is something that's used on cruise ships, yes.
Okay. So, so is that something that you would consider in this design?
No.
To make it more aesthetically pleasing?
Okay.
No. Okay.
We just need to, I'm sorry, we just need to hold on for a second?
Brief recess.
Brief recess?
Yeah.
Because one of our members left. Right, so we just need a brief moment.
Can I, will I be able to continue?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. Absolutely, you just need a moment.
Can I motion for recess?
A second.
Aye.
All right.
Hi, Trudy.
Eight fifty-four P M. Housewoman in Baltimore.
I'm here and I apologize. I didn't know how to raise my hand.
May I address a more?
Here.
Michael Manzella?
Here.
Trudy Stiker?
Here.
Jennifer Soder?
Here.
Alexis Taylor?
Here.
Barbara Kizik?
Here. Okay.
Trudy, thank you.
Can we, can we hear your name just one more time, please?
Want me to state my name again?
Yes, please.
Madeline Monaco.
Great. Thank you.
So the architect testified that the wall that's going to be facing Ocean Avenue will have greenery on it. That twenty-foot wall will have greenery on it. At a previous meeting, I can't remember if it was the TRC or the city council meeting, you guys stated that it would take about ten years for that greenery to grow up that wall. What are your plans to make that wall aesthetically pleasing for everybody who needs to walk by that wall and look at it every day, for those of us who live here full-time? What are your plans to make that wall more aesthetically pleasing within the ten years that it's going to take for that greenery to grow?
I, I think first, the, the question of how long it'll take to grow, we'll let Mr. Bauer answer.
I, I know what I said was, you testified at the TRC meeting or the city council that it would take ten years.
What I was going to say is if Mr. Handel can talk about what the exterior of the wall will look like prior to whenever the vines grow.
So we believe it is- We believe it is aesthetically pleasing. Uh, we will have Tom Bauer testify to the amount of time, if you ask him, on how long that wall will grow in. You know, we think the, 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 as we have mentioned, we, we believe that the patterning of the siding is attractive in and of itself. We think the addition of the stainless steel, of green screen that the vines grow on is also attractive. So in our opinion, it is already aesthetically attractive.
The, the wooden wall, as it is, is aesthetically pleasing in your opinion?
We believe so, yes.
I disagree, but that's okay. Um, also, at the city council meeting, you had a visual for the line of sight for the condominium complex right across the street to the, to the ocean. And you testified that there would be no obstruction from the, the people who live on the second floor of that condominium complex. There would be no obstruction to, to the line of sight, to the beach. Is that still your testimony? I didn't see any pictures that, do you have a picture that shows the line of sight?
I did not so testify, so I cannot, I cannot-
Are you, are you referring to him or somebody from?
The developer, the developer.
I just have to-
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying that.
So I, I cannot, I did not testify to that, so I cannot, I cannot comment on that.
So I'll ask your attorney, do you have a visual that shows the same visual that you showed at the city council meeting?
I do not have it. We don't have it loaded in this deck. So I, I can't pull it up right now. I don't-
Okay, so what, what is the line of sight, then? Can you tell me what the line of sight is with this new plan that you have?
I, to clarify, this is not a new, new plan. The, the height has not-
You made some modifications. You're showing some different pictures today that you have not shown previously. I'd like to know if the line of sight from the, people who live on the second floor is going to be unobstructed to the beach and to the water.
Mr. Handel, just to be clear, the height of the building has not changed between when the plans were submitted to the TRC in December and now, is that correct?
They have not.
Okay.
I would still like to, you to answer the question of whether the line of sight will be obstructed from the people who live on the second floor. It's a very simple question.
And I'm saying, we don't have that exhibit with us this evening.
You don't need to have the exhibit. You know you have one exhibit, so why don't you just answer the question?
I don't know. I, I don't, I don't have an exhibit to show you what the line of sight would be. We don't have that with us.
But you know what the answer is. So why don't you answer the question?
So if the question is, you're asking, will it be obstructed? In order for Mr. Handel to answer that, he needs to refer to an exhibit that shows where someone would stand in reference to the building. So I don't have that exhibit with us, so I can't-
But you can answer the question.
No, I, I am an ar-, I'm not an architect. I am not a licensed profession. No, I, I'm not, I'm an, I am an attorney. I cannot answer-
You're examining the witness, not the interviewer.
Right. I can't answer a question about line of sight, but I'm telling you, I know that you were referring to an exhibit.
Yes.
And that unfortunately, I do not have that.
Can you answer me why you did not show that exhibit this evening?
It was not a strategic decision. It just, that exhibit is not here. It was not, it's not here.
That's fine. Thank you.
Hi, Mary Ann Roper. Um, I'm not a member of Saw, but I support some of their work, and I live on Deal Lake Drive. I've been here for about eight or nine years. Uh, just a couple of very quick questions. Um, what is the timeline for completion of this project? Maybe it's public knowledge, but I don't know.
So we, we have to get through this process, and then we would have to do, and so we would need full approval, which we're not sure how that, how long that would take. Um, this is, uh, we would need to do full construction documents, which are not done yet, which would probably take another six to nine months. And then it's probably, um, a twelve-to-fourteen month construction period would be my best, my best guess, um, but that is a guess.
Thank you. And I don't know if this is a pertinent question. Will this also correlate with the restoration of the boardwalk that was ripped up?
That was not a testimony that was given here by this architect.
Okay.
So I'm sorry you can't ask that.
Okay. And, um, will this interfere any, any way at all? Because I know on a Sunday or a weekend in the summer, even during the week, you see people dropping off their kids, dropping off their beach bag, you know, bags or whatever. And you're saying this is between, I believe, sixth and seventh? Will this interfere with any of the public ask, access to the boardworker beach with all those people, four hundred people coming?
We don't believe so. We will actually be providing the public access on the, on Sixth Street and Seventh Street, um, all of which does not exist currently. So we think we'll actually be improving public access to the beach.
Okay. And, um, I see all the men in suits. Is Brian Chapinka one of them? He's, or he's the VP of iStar, I don't know if you pronounce his last name. Where, where are you?
Is there a question for the witness? The question for the witness?
Um, okay, yes, I have a question.
Okay.
If iStar, who was a developer, um, cares so much about the community, as they've said when they developed the Salvation Army and Asbury Lanes, and I think they've done a great job on that, but how could you care about, about the community when you make a development or a project that's gonna require four hundred additional parking spaces, seventy-five employees, almost five hundred people? And I think that's a drain on our police department, on our community, and our residents. So how could that be?
That, that's not a question for the architect. So you'd like to put that as a comment at the end of this project?
Okay.
As the end of this discussion, which could be, go over a couple of days, you can certainly bring that up.
Okay.
But that's not for the architect to answer.
Okay, that's it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Claire Chapra. I live on Deal Lake Drive, and I am not a member of Saw. Uh, you mentioned, uh, developing the design plans with respect to the surrounding environment and area. Uh, all the other buildings that are currently east of Ocean Ave are currently operated by Madison Marquette, who has a very strong history of prioritizing, collaborating with the community on projects aimed at preserving and enhancing, uh, the spirit of our town, not just for private use. Uh, most notably via allowing their structure to participate in the public art murals and the installations. Uh, as the architect for the master redeveloper, whose commitment to Asbury Park is supposed to be enhancing our town for the entire community and not just for private use, I'm wondering, have you allotted any consideration of space in your design on the exterior of the building to participate in the public art, which benefits our community and the greater economy of tourism on the boardwalk?
We have had no conversations, um, about that at this time.
But there is not currently, uh, any design elements on the exterior of the building that are designed to enhance the community rather than just enhance for private use?
We believe, again, we believe that the aesthetics of the building actually do enhance the community. Um, we have not had conversations with the developer about the incorporation.
Could you speak to which of those, uh, elements enhance for the general community?
We think the, the green walls, as discussed, we think the design of the, of the facades does create community enhancement.
And serve and enhance the community? Okay, that's my only question, then. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kathleen Muma. I live at fifteen oh one Ocean Avenue. I'm a member of Saw. Uh, I also have a question about public arts. We have a, a vibrant, active public arts commission in town that advises the mayor and governing body on, um, uh, how our community interacts with art and how it's enhanced by art, architecture, and design. And I wondered if, in your design process, did you collaborate with the Public Arts Commission of Asbury Park, um, in the design process, or get any feedback, or throw it to them for comment?
Not to the best of my knowledge.
Okay. Is there a reason why we would exclude them? Are they ever included in, maybe that's not-
There may have been conversations that we were not privy to. There may have been conversations that we were not privy to. As far as I know, there were no conversations to exclude them. I was just not privy to any of those conversations.
Okay, thank you. Um, and my only other question is, uh, again, regarding view, are you aware of any obstructions of view from any point of view? So I believe my, Madeline had asked you about obstruction of view from, uh, the second floor. Are you, are you aware of, of an obstruction of view from, from other places?
Sure, any building of any size will obstruct a view. So, so, yes.
Okay.
Hi, Scott Levine, fifteen oh one Ocean Avenue, not a member of Saw. Um, I've been there for ten years, um, and this is, uh, construction going up right in front of our building. And, uh, when we purchased the, when we purchased our units ten years ago, we were told that there would potentially could be a beach club there. But we were also told that there was a maximum of fifteen-foot height, I believe, um, for the building. So some of your building goes up to over thirty feet tall now. And, and on top of that, I think we were also told that, and maybe it's part of the plan too, was that there was, uh, forty-five percent of the building had to be transparent or clear, almost kinda see-through. Uh, so are you asking for variances for both of those, um, elements of this, this design?
I, I don't believe all of, I can't speak to what you were told. Um, you know, I believe we're actually, under Cafra, the building could be substantially taller than it is, you know, car- taller than it is, you know, currently designed at. And then, and then Mr. Keenan, Mr. Keenan will actually speak to any of the variances that we might be seeking at the end of month, so he'll speak later to that.
Okay, I mean, I hope the, I hope the town is, is looking into this and looking into what was, what is required. And I would, I would ask the town to deny this application if it is, if they are asking for variances, because it affects over 300 people that live in the buildings right behind us. So I would, I would, you know, ensure that, that this is, you know, meeting the maximum height requirements and the, and the maximum visibility around the building. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jeff Porter, 1501 Ocean, Saw household. I have questions that actually relate to the architect and the slides that we saw. Can you bring up the fence slide, please?
Oh, sorry, I just have to put back to full screen.
In, in the meantime, can you, do you know how deep the pool is?
I believe the pool is four feet deep.
Okay. Will it be for lap swimming?
It is lap swimmable, so it's basically, it's, it's, it's a little bit longer than is typical for, for lap swimming. It's 100 feet, 100 feet long. It has a profile, a profile at the end, so one of, one of the turns will be slightly atypical.
Okay.
And I pulled up the exhibit, I think you wanted, it's marked A11, is this the one?
Yes, that's the one. This picture on the left, this is the fence from the interior of the club looking outward, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. What is, what are we looking at on the bottom left there? Why are there shadows? Because you're saying that the fence is, is not see-through. So this looks like a dune fence that you'd go up and see on the beach right now, that the area is blocked off.
Yeah, so the, it's really, the, it's a, if you look at the...
I'm looking at it.
Yeah, so the...
It's deceiving, that those are shadows.
There's no...
There's a sky up above, right?
Which is, which is accurate.
Okay, so the slats there, it looks like there's spaces in between, but you're saying it's a closed...
There, there are no spaces in between, except at the top.
Yeah, there's one foot, right? It's, it goes to six.
Correct, correct.
Six-six?
Correct.
Okay. So six-six, and the slats are only above, but there's light coming in at the bottom somehow in this picture?
No, I don't believe that is true.
I don't know where those shadows are coming from, but that picture is not very good.
I think you're seeing the slats of the wood decking.
Yes, but they're lighter. They should all be the same color if that wall in front of it is a solid.
It just, okay.
I'm just saying, from perspective, I mean, that's a little misleading. Then also, I'd like to ask about the, the wall and the ocean outside. When these things open up, the ivy is on the wall?
No, the ivory, if you, if you look at the section there, the ivory is on a green screen, which is a series of cables that supports the vine growth, which is in front, in front of the wall.
Okay, so how far are your shutters going to open?
The shutters open into the cabanas, so they can fully open, and they can probably open to 90 to 180 degrees.
Okay. And the people in the cabanas can look out, but nobody on the street can see through the ivy, correct?
The, the idea really is not to create views within the...
Airflow and light.
Correct.
Got it, thank you.
Pam Lamberton, Sunset Avenue, I am a member of Saw. Could you bring up the boardwalk picture of the seven-foot fence, please?
This one?
Yes, thank you.
And for, just for one, I'm sorry, one moment.
Because this is an architectural drawing, that's why I am asking this question here. How wide is that boardwalk right there? It looks like it's big enough for a ballroom, the space. I don't think the boardwalk is, compared to the seven-foot high fence, that wide.
So, just for clarity, the boardwalk is under the city's project separately? Are you, so you're asking about what, what is shown, or what is, just to clarify?
Well, I'm looking at what is shown, and I'm, it's, I, I don't think it's that wide there. It's not intended to be, it's not going to be built that wide there.
I believe, I believe that is, I believe that is correct. I believe this is probably the width of the existing boardwalk, which probably our render had. I don't, I don't believe this reflects the width of the proposed boardwalk.
Thank you.
Okay, my, and my question is, because this is the architectural rendering, that's, that's why I'm asking. So the boardwalk is not that wide there. And I think we all agree that the seven-foot fence that runs along the boardwalk, upbutts the boardwalk, and is, is just a plain high fence, 280 feet long, seven feet high. So it looks to me like, to break it up, you have put a planter in front of it?
Can you describe the articulation of the fence?
Again, we can go back to the fence, you know, so the, the fence is actually, you know, you know, again, we believe, we believe attractive, you know, basically it has a series of elements and planes and the picket on top, you know, and so again, we may disagree on this, but we find that fence attractive.
I'm sorry, but it's hideous. It is up 270 feet long and seven feet high, and it upbutts the boardwalk. So if you're walking down the boardwalk, people enjoy strolling down the boardwalk, that's narrower than what is shown in that picture. They're going to see this fence. So the planter that, that you show also in that previous picture, it looks like, you put that there to sort of make it look better, is that you're not putting a planter on the public boardwalk, right?
No, we believe that will be part of, it's our understanding of what will happen as part of the boardwalk design, and again, we, you know, our understanding of the proposed boardwalk is that it's approximately 60 feet wide.
Okay, but you've put a planter on the public boardwalk.
We believe there...
That's going to take up some of the public space in order to beautify the fence a little bit. Why don't you just move the fence in and take some of your own property and put planters or plants on that side to beautify it? You have, the pictures that we have seen appear to use every inch of that lot. I have, I have seen figures that tell me that you don't think it's that kind of lot coverage?
Our...
But it goes from lot line to lot line.
No, it does not, and our, the, our site engineer will actually explain the lot coverage and, and the setbacks and the easements that have been granted.
Okay. Can you ask him then also to address the, using public space for the, the planters, and a more accurate rendering of what the boardwalk, boardwalk will look like, and the fence?
Just to clarify on the boardwalk, to my knowledge, the city council has not approved final plans for the construction of the boardwalk in this area. If I'm wrong, I'm sure...
I'm sorry, are you talking to me? I can't hear you.
Yeah, I, and I apologize, I can't.
I know.
It's a little awkward. To, to my knowledge, and our members of the board who can correct me, the city council has been reevaluating the boardwalk plans and has not yet approved a new design, final design for the boardwalk in this area. So...
Okay, but it's, it's not going to be nearly that wide. Could you just make sure then that when the engineer comes back, he, we're not seeing public space being taken up by something to make the fence look more attractive? Can you make the fence more attractive, push it back two feet, put some plantings or ornamentation or artwork on the boardwalk side?
I think that's more of a comment.
I'm, I'm asking, can you just make sure when the engineer comes?
We will not, we, yes, the, when the engineer comes, they will testify. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Catherine Healy, 305 8th Avenue, card-carrying member of many organizations. My brother is a LEED-certified architect, so for folks in the room that are not architects, he builds buildings that are meant to live in a world where climate change is a real thing. I'm just curious if any architects within your firm are LEED-certified, or if any sustainability went into the design of this structure?
We have many LEED-certified professionals, we have many passive, passive house certified professionals, we have created the world's largest passive house building on Roosevelt Island, and yes.
I'm asking about this building, though.
Yes.
Okay. You mentioned that the width of the pool was shortened from 23 to 21 feet due to the flow of foot traffic. Is that what you said, and can you elaborate on that decision?
It's not about the flow of traffic, it was really more about really creating appropriate deck space for enough room for furniture and for people to gracefully move around. It's not that we're anticipating massive foot traffic, it was really just the decision that was made to make what we felt the project work a little better.
Okay. And again, I'm also a, you can tell me if I'm being redundant, but is there a speaker system on both the first floor and the second floor, and will the speakers be audible from the boardwalk side? I think it was talked about from the other side, but...
The speakers, I believe there will be speakers on both levels. I believe they're all focused inside. I cannot, unfortunately, testify to whether there would be any sound flow on, on the boardwalk. The, every attempt has been made to try to keep it all internal. I'm, I'm not a crystal engineer, I can't actually tell you that there would be absolutely none.
Okay, with that, though, since every attempt was made, and even beyond speaker systems, just the volume of people and all those, all those great visitors, was there any consideration given to sound insulating materials, or would that also be an engineering question?
Engineering question.
Okay. Will there be any plastic coverings required or any other winterizing screens used to maintain a shuttered club in the off-season? So, I mean, what is, what is the plan? Because we can really only swim outside for like two to three months in Asbury Park, so...
Sure, so there, there will be a pool cover that has not yet been specified. Yet, again, in order to get site plan approval, there's a, most of the specifications of all of the detailed materials would happen during the construction document phase. We have not entered that phase yet, and, you know, and that will not happen until after we secure approval from this group.
Okay, thank you.
Carrie Butch, 500 Deal Lake Drive. I am a member of Saw, and if you'd like to become a member, just let me know, and I will take your name and information. So I have, anybody here wants you to do that, you can do that. The pool club is being marketed as an amenity to the recently developed high-rise condominium complex, the Asbury Park Ocean Club. Correct?
I cannot talk to the marketing plans.
Oh, you can't at all?
That's, that's again, it's for the architect's question.
All right, so, but you can confirm that information about price and availability of membership or options for purchasing deli swim passes have not been disclosed or presented to the public?
Again, not my area of expertise.
That's not part of, that's not an architect's...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Warner, I know I've had one shot.
I know, if, if it's, if it has anything to do with anything that you've heard since then...
Yes, some new, new topic, but definitely architect-related.
Sorry, I just, people have had a chance to speak. I don't want to have this extent where everybody comes up two, three, four times.
I understand. What, but the ruling really is, is that in, in our, in my interpretation, let me just put it that way, is that if, if he's going to ask something about something that's already been, that's been discussed since he came up, and it's new information to him, then he can come up and ask the question.
Thank you.
That's, that's the way that I'm looking at it, that's why I'm allowing that. But I understand exactly what you're saying. If it's redundant, then you're right, absolutely.
Thank you very much. Warner Baumgartner, Fifth Avenue, city historian. As an architect, do you design other buildings besides these type of commercial or, or functional type structures?
Yes.
Okay, have you done any other work in Asbury Park?
Yes.
And what projects would that be?
So we're working on the project for iStar at Ocean Avenue.
Ah, the, the large tower, okay. In, in your design philosophy, do you take advantage of, of natural vistas, like scenery, I mean, ocean views?
Can I, can I just stop right now? This is not new information, okay? So where, the direction that you're going, you knew all this before.
I'll get to the point.
Yes. If it's new information that you hadn't heard prior to your prior question...
Okay. Why not take advantage of the beautiful ocean views on the east side of this building by providing a view from inside the building to the beautiful outside?
We believe we have both internal views of the club and we have ocean views from the roof deck.
I didn't understand.
We have, we have internal views at the, at the, at the ground floor level of the club, and we have ocean views at the roof deck.
How do you have exterior views from inside the club if you have a solid wall?
We, there's, again, there is a roof deck, which we've disclosed, which we've talked about, which is elevated above the first level of the, you know, of the pool, that will have ocean views.
Yeah, I'm not asking if you have ocean views, I'm asking why not provide...
We do.
...ocean views on the first floor? Okay, all right. Regarding the CAFRA issues, you had testified that this project will comply with all DEP and CAFRA requirements?
We believe so.
Okay. I understand the collaboration that you engage in with the other professionals. Who would be the best professional, if not yourself, to address a CAFRA issue that's in the redevelopment plan?
Probably our engineer, who will be hopefully getting up soon.
Okay, so if you're given a task to do, are you given constraints as to what to design to, or do you design something and then the engineer looks at it and whittles it down to fit?
It sounds like a theoretical question. What, what's your real question?
Okay.
Is there a specific question that you're looking for as opposed to theoretical process?
Okay, DEP coastal zone management section of the redevelopment plan. There's a section 5.5, DEP coastal zone management, and within that, there's a section entitled Scenic Resources and Design, 7:7E-8:12. I would like to know which professional, if not this professional, would be best to address meeting that requirement?
I don't believe it was...
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think our, yes, it's not Mr. Handel.
I could read, I could read it into the record.
Still not the architect.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, Ernest Minoli, 400 Deal Lake Drive, Asbury Park. In terms of architecture, as an architect, of course, you have to plan for safety of the occupants of this proposed structure, yes? Which fire official, relative to your architectural design, did you work with from Asbury Park?
So again, you know, we're not far along in the permitting process, our first step is...
You know, I really can't understand you.
So the, the way that the process will work is that we have interpreted the codes to the best of our ability. We will be working, once we secure approvals, and if we secure approvals for this project, we will be working with the fire department, we will be working with the building department, and all of the, you know, people who will have purview over this as far as construction. So we are not at that stage yet, we have not, we have not interfaced with the fire department yet, we've merely designed for codegressing, so that will happen later.
Okay, so you have not interfaced with the fire department yet. Where'd you come up with the 400 occupancy?
It's a, it's a code area which is determined by, by space, you know, requirements.
Okay. You know, I, I have quite a few questions, I, I want to feel comfortable doing that, but I want to tell you what it's like here as a homeowner in a Roosevelt...
No, no, what's your question?
Okay, no, I meant, relative to the architecture... No, I meant relative to the architecture or the board. In other words, when we ask questions, you know, all we see in the background is you guys shaking your head no like we can't. I'm asking them architectural questions. So, I like to feel like I don't have to see a backdrop of frustrated people on the board. These are architectural questions. So, relative to the materials, it's an all-wood structure, yes?
It's predominantly wood, yes.
Okay. You indicated that there's a systems tower, yes? The elevator, and you designed that?
There is a second floor. There is an elevator that goes to that, correct?
I thought you said you designed a structure, the highest structure, as the systems and the elevator tower.
There are some mechanical... Again, there are mechanical... There's allocation for mechanical space on the ground floor. There's the elevator that goes to the second floor. There's some mechanical space on the second floor as well.
Is the design to include fire safety systems, like sprinklers?
Yes.
It will be sprinkled?
Yes.
Will there be gas brought in to service the kitchen?
Most likely.
Most likely. Okay. And there is no steel as part of the structure? No, it's the frame, the crossbeams. It's all wood. It's heavy-duty wood, probably 100-year womanizer.
Yeah, there's... And again, the... Just to restate, we are early days in terms of the construction documents of this project. You know, so we will be designing it to code. The construction documents for this project are not yet done. They will be done after the approval of this project. And then many of the questions that you are addressing will be addressed at that point in time.
Architecturally, what would happen if there was no wall? In other words, you built the second deck. Architecturally, you designed it because you have a wall where the people are at pool level. So, you want people to be able to go up and see the ocean. Why do you even need the second level if you just take the wall down?
Again, the idea is that we have cabanas backing on to Ocean Avenue. We have a second level which provides ocean view. And we have the pool club experience on the ground floor. That is the design of our project.
Okay. Is 8-9... I believe that's the one that shows your structure at the highest point, and it's in front of North Beach. Is that correct?
Yes.
Architecturally, if you were... I can phrase this because you're going to say it's a wrong question. You, as an architect for this structure, do you think the architect who designed North Beach would be happy what you're doing to their view? And that's not a... I can't ask that question, right?
Yeah, I don't. Can't speculate.
I really tried to figure that out, but I knew you'd shoot that one.
Just to clarify...
Anyway, anyone who lives within three floors in North Beach... I mean, this thing is an encroachment. I don't understand, in today's environment, how are you getting this whole wall theory passed everyone? I mean, at one point in the...
That's not a question.
All right. That's not a question?
That's not a question.
All right. How are you getting this wall theory passed? That's not a question?
That's a question.
All right. Can he answer? The architect, please? Hello?
Are we... Made an application?
We're here giving... We are here giving public testimony and comment. We've explained what we're trying to do. You have the right to comment. The process has been laid out by the board, and everyone is trying their best to respect the process.
I think we're... What was it called? Cross-examining the architect, isn't it? Why do we have the right to ask you questions? That's what I'm saying. As an architect...
Only if the questions are within scope of his testimony. He started asking questions that don't relate to his testimony, then he doesn't have to answer.
And which question was that? I'm talking about the wall.
I'm not going to debate with you. You ask the questions.
Okay. Architecturally, when... I guess you work for... Or get paid by... Is it iStar or Asbury Partners, or are they the same? I don't know. But whomever, it seems to be tied in with other development on... You said the Ocean Club. Okay. So, now, putting that all together and knowing people from Asbury, we don't like walls. So, what do you design here? A thing with four walls around it. And my question to you is, did you consider having no walls? I mean, why walls? What's the purpose of the wall? Is it to keep out the public? Or to keep out dogs? Or to keep out insects? Obviously, it doesn't keep out insects. But what's the purpose of the wall? I just want to know, architecturally, what is the purpose of the wall, architecturally?
The purpose of the wall is actually to define the program inside. We believe it works to define the program as requested for the beach club. We think it is appropriate.
I don't know if anybody else heard you. I didn't hear you. The purpose of the wall is what?
The... We believe the beach club program is best served by the design that we have put forward, and we believe that the walls are appropriate.
Okay. So, the wall best serves the membership of the club?
It serves the users of the club.
The users of the club. It creates privacy for them, yes?
Creates some privacy for them. That is true.
For who?
I said that is true.
For them, members. Okay. So, if it's like creating a wall for the people inside, and I don't know, it seems like most of the residents... Architecturally, did you think about most of the residents in Asbury are actually going to be walled out of the club? So, how does that work? In other words, what's the justification for creating? At least from what I gather, when I saw some other work that you've done at Ocean Club, it seems to indicate in there a beach club. Now, is that the club in the prospectus for the ocean that is now becoming this? In other words, is this what was promised to that?
I think we've gone well outside of the architectural question.
That's not related to this application.
It's not architect.
I'm way beyond the scope.
No, I haven't.
Yes, you have.
All right.
You've gone beyond the scope.
No, I have.
The man doesn't... He's not going to talk to you about another project.
What man? He's an architect. I'm not asking a man question. I'm asking an architect.
Your questions have to be relating to the testimony.
Okay. You're the architect for Ocean Club, yes?
Yes.
Good. Now, in the prospectus, there talks about a beach...
That's not the subject of this application. It's irrelevant. It's not this project.
I'm telling you, this is a tough job.
I agree.
Really a tough job. You guys are good at what you do. I think next you can get... I don't want to say it. I don't want to say it. All right. So, it's an all-wood structure. And you feel, architecturally, if you look at the beach club 500 or 1,000 feet north after Sandy, it was devastated. Built out of heavy wood? Almost in the same lateral plane as your building. So, my question is, have you ever seen pictures of what that looked like after Sandy?
We have seen pictures of after... Yes.
Okay. So, what's different about your wood structure that could withstand Sandy?
Again, we spoke to that prior. You know, so basically, the whole system of pilings is different than what was utilized before. The idea of running the structure parallel, perpendicular to wave action, the connections and ties... Please let me finish. The connection and ties. The elevation of the ground floor is higher, the breakout wall. So, basically, this reflects, you know, all of the knowledge that we have been able to gain, you know, since that period of time.
Okay. Thank you. Architecturally, was the pool designed to be higher for a reason that, according to the new code, you couldn't sink it level with the ground? Is that what we're really talking about here?
Again, it's prudent to design, you know, all new structures. You know, again, the requirement is to design new structures so that their ground level is one foot above the base flood elevation, which establishes the level of the ground floor.
Now, I'm going to preface this as an architectural question. Is this an above-ground pool? That's an architectural question? Is it an above-ground pool? Is part of it above ground?
I'm not sure how you're defining it.
That's an architectural question. Hello? Sorry.
What... I'm sorry. What's above ground? What was the question about above ground?
Yes, it's a pool above ground.
So, in general, grade is determined to be at the new level of the base flood elevation. You know, so that it's determined to be at the elevation that we are setting the ground floor. So, I guess I do not believe that this would be considered an above-ground pool.
Now, wait. This is an architectural yes-or-no question?
No, I gave you...
Is the pool above ground?
And he just answered.
And it's architectural?
He just answered.
What did he say? I didn't hear.
I think Mr. Architect just said in simple language, is it below ground or above ground?
That's all.
It's so...
It's neither one.
You know, it's not... If you please listen.
Okay.
And so, I'm being very respectful of you.
I'm being respectful of you. I'm just... I want an answer.
I would ask... And I gave you an answer, and I'll repeat it, and I'll try to help you understand.
Okay. I'm all ears.
So, I believe that ground is redefined to be, you know, that the base flood elevation plus one in order to, you know, for all height measurements and everything like that. And so, the pool is at that grade elevation. So, I believe that this would not be considered an above-ground pool.
It's not an above-ground pool? That's what you said. Okay. I'll accept that. But, you know, if it gets built, I'll go over there, and I'll stand on the ground and measure. I think it's above ground. It looks like it is, at least by the design. And that's an architectural comment, sir. I know the lawyer's about to shut these questions down. I mean, the part... Designing for the gentleman earlier, I'm asking, as an architect, you designed for the workers? In other words, the kitchen and everything is adequate design? I think you mentioned there's a bar there?
I did not. There's a kitchen. There's an area for outdoor dining. The uses... Again, we're still in early phases of design, and we haven't begun all of the permitting required for the project.
Again, architecturally, could this pool be designed in-ground with no walls around it? Just architecturally?
I do not believe that you could... Again, we have to go back to the definition of grade. I do not believe that we could be at the level of Ocean Avenue with no walls and have occupancy. That would be exactly the... You know, setting up for the Sandy problem. All codes that have been written since that point would keep you from building a structure like that.
Okay. So, the question is, could you build this pool architecturally minus the walls?
He just answered that.
I think we've answered it. We've asked and answered that one several times.
Wait a minute. Wait a minute. It's a redundant question?
Yes.
Yes.
He said no?
All right. Well, she's interpreting for me. Okay. Everybody heard? Come on, Mayor. Help me out here.
You got to put your...
What?
You got to put your ear to the microphone.
Put my ear to the microphone?
And you'll hear it. Yeah.
I'm sure. No, I'm not... I'm not...
That's what he did before.
Now what? Now they shuffle you off, right? You're on my side? Well, let me keep asking some questions. Thank you. So, the side on the boardwalk, there's no openings?
Oh.
Solid. Yes?
Correct.
Okay. Did you design for cigarette smoking? No. You didn't?
That was straightforward.
No.
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 He said.
Asked him architecturally, did he design for cigarette smoking?
No. He said no. He gave a straightforward answer.
So, lively group here, you know? All right. So, you didn't design for... Are people going to be allowed to smoke there?
What's next? What's next?
It's public space? I thought it's private space.
What's next? What's your next question? Architecturally?
No, we don't have this important. In other words, you're going to have 400 people in there, and when you design this layout with no exits on the east side, et cetera, a wall all around, and I ask you, did you consider architecturally that some people may smoke? What, Ms.? Can I ask you?
Respectfully, I think the smoking habits of any potential patrons are not the purview of this board.
Wait a minute. Are you saying an architect does not have...
No.
No.
Hasn't...
Here's... No.
You know what? What?
I...
Respectfully, man and chairwoman, the public comment has been going on for some time.
Move along. Next?
Okay. Also, as part of your design, did you put those butt things where they're going to go?
No. He already answered the question. You need to move on to another question.
I'm asking about the... You guys now are all of a sudden in a hurry. I had to sit and listen to you for all these hours, which was, I thought, non-really demanding questions. And now, when I'm trying to get some important things about safety, about the wall, about the pool being above ground, you're saying, you know, it's not relevant. Well, where are those butt things going to go? They have to be designed in.
Cigarette butts.
It's not an architectural question. It's not an arch...
It's not an architectural...
It's not an architectural question.
Testimony, and it's a not valid question for this witness.
Really?
Plus, there's no smoking on the beach anyway.
Is that what we're talking about?
I'm not debating.
Okay.
Beyond the scope of this testimony, and that's the reason why I shouldn't ask that question.
Okay. The design of everything inside, you're talking about wood. You're talking about probably canvas chairs. You're talking about a lot of bringing gas into the building, a kitchen, et cetera. I mean, someone asked you, like, architecturally, was it designed like workstations, et cetera, et cetera?
Respectfully, once again.
That's what?
Workstations were not part of his testimony, so I think it probably needs to stick to his testimony.
Who designs a kitchen?
The work... The workstations, the...
Okay. This one. Okay. Yeah. Show me a picture. I have one more question if you show me 8-8. Show me A8, and that'll be my last question.
Is this the document you're referring to?
There it is. Now, what I've heard about seven different definitions, what I want to know is, those people, if they're standing next to that wall, is that in scale? What's wrong? In other words, you're telling us from the ground in the front to the top of your utility tower or elevator tower is 30-odd feet? Is that correct?
Yes.
To me, that's not in scale. But anyway, so, so if I was standing right at the base of that wall, and I took a tape measure, the way, if this goes the way shown here, and I stretched out the tape measure up to green wall and up to the top of that structure, what would the tape measure tell me?
You couldn't do that because they're not in the same plane. So we've testified repeatedly that the height of the-
Well, you know, if you like-
Please, please let me, please, please let me finish. Please let me finish. So the height of the green wall is 20 feet above Ocean Avenue. If you were standing at the base of that wall, you would, the tape measure would extend approximately 17 feet 6 inches, because the site slopes up to that wall. If you were then, if, you know, if you measured from Ocean Avenue to the top of that bulkhead, you would be 33 feet from Ocean Avenue, you would be approximately 31 feet 6 inches measured if you extended a horizontal ruler by 10 feet, you know, from the base, you know, from the base of, if you were standing in the corner.
So, we got 20 feet plus 13 feet? 33 feet?
33 feet from Ocean Avenue, 31.6 from the point of, approximately of standing at the corner of the building.
33 feet? Okay, done, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, just, just so that I just like to alert people, is that we're going to be closing down at 10 o'clock, that's within our bylaws.
And we moving real quick here.
So, so we have, we-
Right. And based on those calculations of the 33 feet, is it correct to assume that there would be partial obstruction from the folks that are living at 1508, whatever that address is, for the first one and a half floors? Is that a correct calculation?
I believe that that might be correct.
Okay. Second thing, the calculation, the estimate that was given is of 400 people, I'm going to guess that we could say that is mathematically incorrect and above capacity based on the square footage that you're saying that this space is. And I can guess that approximately 100 to 120 people would be the capacity, considering the width and diameter of the pool.
The, again, we are not necessarily planning, again, the question was asked, you know, in many different ways. We're not necessarily assuming that there would be 400 people in the club at any period of time. There may, it's, it's really what has been designed for in terms of exiting, which is a square footage calculation based upon the surface area available to, to potential people if they were standing close together, and the occupancy of the pool. So that is not necessarily what we believe will be at the beach club.
Right, that's why I say safely, we could assume and guess 100 to 120 people safely, without folks falling into the full pool, trip injury and all that sort of business. Which comes to my other and final question. How many areas of egress and stairwells are there coming from the second level to the ground and coming, there's no egress other than the little archway there, and it seems like on each, the north and the south side, there's no other way of coming out. And that would be a fire and safety issue.
Sure, so the, you know, we've checked the travel distances and we're fine, so there's an exit out onto Ocean Avenue, there's an exit out onto the Sixth Street Beach Connection and Seventh Street Beach Connection, so there are three exits from the ground floor of the, of the facility. There are two stairs from the roof deck with adequate capacity to serve those populations.
Okay, and what are the width of those egress areas?
So, each of those stairs has a four-foot, it's a, you know, you measure capacity in the width of each run of the stair, it's a four-foot stair.
And the doorways on the ground floor egress?
Are three, are three feet, as is typical.
How about a width of a double door similar to the front here, was approximately four to five feet? So, and I'm, I'm looking at basic fire and safety.
I just, just so we're clear, I think the testimony earlier was that the building has to meet all applicable fire codes.
Right, but I'm asking-
And that the review for fire code compliance is done as part of the construction permit review process.
However, that should also be built into the architectural plan.
But, but that the planning board does not have purview over compliance with the fire code, those are for fire code professionals.
Yeah, but that should be a consideration for the plan.
And we agree, and we think, in checking the exits, we think we actually do, we do have capacity between the Sixth and Seventh Street Connections and the very large opening onto Ocean Avenue.
Okay, and then, a final question, we are corrected, there will be no enclosed roofing on this project, is that correct?
There is, you know, as said in prior testimony, there, on the, on the second level, there's a very small roofed-in area that encloses the elevator and mechanical equipment. There's no other plant there, and then there is a shade structure on that area, just to be 100% clear about that.
Right, so then, in other words, the questions that people were asking regarding sound and acoustics, then sound is, it's open air, so then all the sound that you would be playing or on speaker would go into the adjacent buildings and surrounding beach areas.
The, and again, the final acoustic design, as well as, you know, is, will be part of the construction documents, the intent is really to, you know, have the sound to the, to the extent physically possible, captured within the, within the perimeter of the building. The walls actually do help in that case, focusing the speakers, you know, inboard, focusing them down as opposed to up. There are mitigations that we can employ that will significantly reduce the transmission of sound-
But we're talking about-
Outside of, outside of the, outside of the complex.
Right, we're talking about open air, so the sound may not carry right there in the immediate adjacent buildings, but could be heard over on Seventh Avenue and Kingsley. Because that's how the sound dynamics would carry.
I do not believe, again-
I bet you.
Almost guaranteed, don't take me on my bet.
Tracy Rogers, Soul Avenue, Saw. I don't want you getting mad, so I'm just going to ask two quick questions from your testimony. One, you made an inaccurate statement on the height, you referenced CAFRA. Right now, which CAFRA permit did you act to design?
So our, so our, so Keenan Hughes will actually go through that in subsequent testimony.
But I'm asking you, you made, you made reference to-
So I, I believe we're entitled to more height than we are currently, that we're currently building. Keenan will talk to that at the end, at the end. That will be, that will be, that will be discussed later.
Okay, so, we go back to the, to the light with the car again, but, my next question, your experience, have you ever done any other beach clubs, or did you actually look at other private beach clubs to encompass your design?
Um, we, you know, we did look at other, you know, the history of beach clubs, you know, along, you know, boat, around the world, yes.
Around the world?
And, and in Ezra, yes. Up and down the Jersey Shore.
Any, any reference to ones, you know, to tell us which ones you kind of looked at?
I don't recall at this point in time.
Holly Shilga, Fifth Avenue. Could you please pull up the slide that has the boardwalk elevation? Yeah, so, earlier, I, I heard, I'm pretty sure I'm correct, in hearing that there's, I forget what you called it, a blow-away wall at the bottom, breakaway wall, where there are going to be storms, there are going to be nor'easters, just, who knows? A lot of sand, a lot of wind, a lot of water. Picture that narrow boardwalk, that's not accurate what we're seeing there, the actual narrow boardwalk, and the water coming up over and the sand and everything washing up against, against what we see there, which looks like a fence that goes right down to the boardwalk. Where is the breakaway wall?
So, on, again, the, the projected elevation of the new boardwalk is at that same one foot above the base flood elevation, so that the-
I'm sorry, one foot above the what?
Above the base flood elevation. So as, our understanding is that the boardwalk will be at elevation 14 foot 6 inches, in order to prevent it from being washed away in that flood that you were mentioning.
The board, okay.
So that the, and so that the, the breakaway walls basically are required on Ocean Avenue, which is significantly lower, should any water go over the, go over that boardwalk.
So the water, okay, so the boardwalk is going to be 14, that's the 14 foot?
Again, we're not, we're not designing the boardwalk, but we understand the design is to, you know, to basically incorporate basic floodproofing mitigation measures. If the boardwalk is lower than 14.6, there would be a breakaway wall between the boardwalk and the, you know, and the structure.
So my understanding was that 14-foot height was going to be the height of the, the beach club floor? It's also the height of the boardwalk, correct?
That is our, our understanding at this point in time.
All right, so, and then, the pool itself is four feet deep, I'm trying to picture where the water's going to go from the boardwalk, and where the sand is going to go from the boardwalk and come out on Ocean Avenue side, and I'm picturing a space, a gap from underneath the floor of the, the lower floor and around the pool deck, a gap of whatever amount of feet that goes down to the sidewalk side, right? Which sounds like it would be a great place for feral cats and rats and, I don't know, I mean, it's going to be an open area that water and all kinds of stuff, you know, and airflow and things. The pool walls, right, so the pool walls will be in there somewhere, four feet, would the water, we're back to stormwater now, if the water comes in and goes through, does it hit the sidewalls of the pool, or does it go under the pool and out the-
I believe it, it would hit the walls of the pool, which are designed in a very robust fashion and supported on, on a number of piles that can take that wave action.
Okay. All right, I have a second question regarding the elevation on the Ocean Avenue side. The thing that you keep calling green screen, that's the stuff that's going to be there on top of the wood, that's going to support whatever, greenery, ivy, whatever, do you have a picture of that?
We will hopefully get to our testimony from our landscape architect, who I believe is up third.
So it's basically like wires and things that are going to support-
Yes, so, so they'll, they'll talk to that.
So in terms of attractiveness against the wood, that's a thoroughly questioned, sorry. Okay.
Great, now that we've finished the, the question portion for our architect, thank you so much. At this point, we've, we're hitting the 10 o'clock hour, which we will then, I'd like to get a motion to carry this particular application without notice to June 24th.
So moved. Sorry. Sorry, I didn't know you were going to say something else.
You want to second that?
And just-
That's next, it's a planning board meeting, it's a normally scheduled planning board meeting. June 24th.
Just for clarity, Madam Chairwoman, June 24th, the regular time for the planning board meeting is 7:00 PM?
7:00 PM. June 24th, 7:00 PM. Carry, the motion is to carry this application without notice, but once again, June 24th, 7:00 PM, as a normal planning board meeting.
Would it, would it be possible, Madam Chairwoman, given the number of people who have commented to start an hour earlier like we did today at 6:00, so it doesn't run too late into the evening?
Well, we normally close at 10:00, no matter what, I mean, that's, we'd have to find out if the, if this is open for us to do it, we can notify you, I guess. What do you think?
Yeah, once we set it.
It depends, I guess that if- It's a normal meeting.
Yeah, the time's already been- Yeah, and registered.
Then 7:00 PM it is.
7:00 PM. Okay?
Second.
Second.
Oh, whatever.
Can we get a motion to, to adjourn?
We need to vote on that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Aye. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.